Good evening. The special meeting of the Annapolis City Council from Monday, March 27th will be called to order at 7:05 PM. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the invocation given by Alderwoman Pendell-Charles, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, help our words be true, help our actions be honest, help our lives to reflect your holiness and shine God's light for all to see. Help us to live with integrity. We thank you, God, for the opportunities to use the gifts that you have given us for your service today. Help us to do so in obedience, expecting nothing more than your well-done as reward. And dear God, please give us the strength to go against the flow of this world. Help us to resist what is wrong in your eyes and to act in ways that please you for the glory of your name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being and every thought and every intention of which there is. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Panalitis.
Present.
Alderman Budd.
Here.
Alderman Peown.
Present.
Alderwoman Pendell-Charles.
Present.
Alderwoman Finlayson.
Present.
Alderman Lippman.
Present.
Alderman Kirby.
Present.
Alderman Pfeiffer.
Present.
Alderman Arnett.
Present.
Madam City Attorney, would you please present our first item?
Mr. Mayor, the first item on the agenda is approval of agenda.
Before this meeting, there was a number of you that requested some additions to the agenda, so bear with me as I make this very long motion. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended to include GA 2617, which is a state revitalization program from the state of Maryland, GA 2717 Atlantic and Coastal Bay 2010 Trust Fund, the City Council citations in recognition of National Women's History Month in 2017, Enter Tyler Alexander Stallings, and Resolution R 1417 National Women's History Month on First Reader, and to postpone R 1217 City Sponsored Special Events in fiscal year 2018 on Second Reader until the special meeting of the September, of the City Council scheduled for Monday, April the 24th, 2017. Is there a second? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Lippman.
If you could just repeat the number of the last one that you proposed postponing?
R 1217 City Sponsored Special Events.
Thank you.
Alderman Arnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What was the new R 1417?
The National Women's History Month.
No, okay. I thought there was another one. I don't, are all of these in Granicus?
No.
No.
These were requests Council members had made to me.
So will we get a copy of them? Okay, thank you. I got it.
Was there a second?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the first item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ceremonial items, a proclamation for the 150th anniversary of the Annapolis Police Department.
Do you want me at the front? All right, we have a citation here for the Annapolis Police Department. We are fortunate enough to have Governor Larry Hogan come by our police department the other day. We gave him a tour of the money, a tour of the facility, which we have, from the money we use. We do a better job securing the money, I trust you. So we showed him how the money he gave us for cameras helped secure 12 handguns, how we solved two of the murders with it. So it was very nice for the governor to come out and we have a proclamation here for 150 years for the police department. So whereas the Annapolis Police Department has started its year-long celebration of the 150th anniversary of the department, and whereas law enforcement in the city of Annapolis dates back to the granting of the charter in 1708, but in 1767 saw the formation of the police department with the appointment of a chief with four officers serving under him. And whereas on June 17th, 1867, the Annapolis Police Department was officially established with the appointment of the first city commissioner and police, in chief of police, and whereas the department will celebrate with a series of public event and community outreach, including the Annapolis Public Safety Expo, an open house, participation in the Memorial Day Parade, a welcome back to school event, and a Thanksgiving Give Back. And whereas throughout the year, the Annapolis Police Department will focus celebrating the anniversary by participating in the Special Olympics, which I might say they do every year, so I want to thank you for that, law enforcement torch run in June, several police-sponsored summer camps, pop-up summer camps, and by participating in the Howlin' Hustle 5K Run in October. And whereas the department is shaped by the community it serves, and whereas it is important for the department to acknowledge its partnership with the community and its anniversary logo, which reads guided by the community, integrity, and service. And whereas the Annapolis Police Department acknowledges that it cannot accomplish any of their goals without the support of Annapolis residents. Now therefore, I'm Michael John Panalitis, mayor of the city of Annapolis, to hereby proclaim today, today to be Annapolis Police Department Day here in the city of Annapolis. Congratulations. Do you want to say anything? Karen, thank you very much. On behalf of the Annapolis Police Department, we'd like to present you with this plaque that has the 150th Anniversary Badge on it at the mayor's office. The badge, sorry. The current badge that we're wearing that has the 150th Anniversary Badge on it. It has all the badges. It has been worn around the place really now, it's been part of the project. I think that's worth it to all of us. Thank you. Would I do, with the Iron Chicken Anniversary T-shirt? Does it mean you got a heart? Mug, and there's a challenge one. Bye-bye. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
The next, Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is City Council Citation to Tyler Alexander Stallings. Tyler, sorry. Tyler Alexander Stallings.
If Mr. Stallings would please join me at the front. All right, we have a citation I'm going to read to you, then we'll tell a little bit of the backstory about what this young man has done and why we're honoring him tonight. So to Tyler Alexander Stallings, "On behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this City Council Citation in recognition of your entrepreneurship, kind heart, and community outreach. We applaud you for your reading initiative called Tyler's 1,000 Book Giveaway and your ongoing traveling book festivals. We acknowledge that you have given away more than 2,500 books, encouraging reading at home and sharing books with youth who cannot afford them on their own. We are also impressed by your commitment to raising awareness about the needs of veterans and your dedication to promoting literacy at all at the age of five years old." Let's give him a round of applause for that right there. "We know you will see tremendous achievement in your future, and we honor you here tonight for your contributions to our community, given under our hand in the great seal of the city of Annapolis on this 27th day of March 2017." Congratulations.
Yeah, it does look kind of funny at the front, but in there it gets kind of, you know, interesting kind of, you know. And I want to give you a happy, you know what, this is the real book anyway, but sometimes that's all it costs. This is my first book, actually. And we talked the stuff to make that for homeless veterans doing. And then I have a coming book that's coming out. We need to follow up on that.
Well, thank you for the book, young man. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Day of getting gifts? I'm loving this.
Mr. Mayor, can you tell us a little bit more about Tyler? Where's he in school and how can we get his book?
University of Maryland. His mother wants to come for him.
Actually, I'm home schooled, so I'm in kindergarten.
Tyler's actually a home schooled kindergartner who became a CEO at the age of four when he told me he wanted his own business. He's been helping homeless veterans by raising money with a can since the age of four, and also his literacy project starts at the age of four because he realized not all kids could afford nice books. So we do the book festival, he picks them out, he handpicks them if he gets a grant, great. If he doesn't, he has community partners, and wherever the kids are, I help him, I'm supportive. These are his ideas, it was his idea to do it. And he recently came to Annapolis several weeks ago to give out 1,000 books and have an awesome party with the help of Disney and New Service America, and he's going to have a permanent location in Annapolis where he will check on the portable book stand and restock it so more kids who don't live near libraries can go in at any time and get the free book.
And for those in the back of the room who could not see, Tyler ran up with his phone to take a picture of his mother as she was talking.
Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is City Council Citation for National Women's History Month 2017.
All right. It's Alderman Kirby, Ms. Moyer, Ms. Nulstat, Ms. Carter, Ms. Hoyle, Ms. Regina Watkins Eldridge, would please join me at the front.
Give me, give me one second, Mr. Mayor, please. First, these citations will be followed later on tonight by a resolution honoring all women in the city of Annapolis, especially those who work for the Annapolis City Government in your, in all of your positions. It took a couple readings, a couple writings of this citation, and I know my mother told me some time ago that women would always get me in some trouble. So picking these five names wasn't the easiest thing to say, to do, to say the least. We have remarkable women that works throughout the city government, and I want each and every one of you, irrespective of your position in city government, to know that you are part of this Women's Month and a part of this resolution.
All right. The first person is Dr. Classy Hoyle, and I'll read this citation to you. "On behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this City Council Citation in recognition of National Women's History Month. We honor the contributions of women who have served on the Annapolis City Council. We honor you here tonight for being the first Alderwoman to amend the city charter to encourage use of gender-specific titles for members of the Annapolis City Council. Women of every race, class, ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of the city of Annapolis in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Women have played a vital role in the history of the city of Annapolis, and we are very fortunate to be able to honor you tonight as one of the great women to represent our city, given under our hand in the great seal of the city of Annapolis, signed by myself and all the members of the city council." Congratulations, thank you. You want to say anything?
Happy birthday, Ms. Hoyle.
Thank you, thank you. I'm just humbled that I could do just a little bit to help. I certainly hope that women are little girls, well, not growing, grow up in a box, you know? You are a girl, a woman, et cetera. And it's great to have, you couldn't beat this little fella this afternoon, but the little girl who's his age needs to know that we're going to work together as woman and man. And I'm just pleased that I could do it a little bit.
On behalf of this, this is to Cynthia Carter. "On behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this City Council Citation in recognition of National Women's History Month. We honor the contributions of women who have served on the Annapolis City Council. We honor you tonight for being the first African-American Alderwoman to serve on the Annapolis City Council, given under our hand in the great seal of the city of Annapolis on this 27th day, 2017." Congratulations. You want to say a few words?
I just want to say to everyone, thank you very much, and I served with honors, and I was, it was really exciting for two terms, but I thank you again, and I thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Kirby.
"On behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we are pleased to confer upon you this City Council Citation in recognition of National Women's History Month. We honor the contributions of women who have served on the Annapolis City Council. We honor you tonight for being the first African-American woman to serve as city clerk for the city of Annapolis. Women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of the city of Annapolis in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Women have played a vital role in the history of the city of Annapolis, and we are fortunate to be able to honor you tonight as one of the great women who represent our city, given under our hand in the great seal of the city of Annapolis." Congratulations. You want to say anything?
I would just like to say, on behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, it's been my great honor to serve you, and our office is always open to you. If you need us, just leave us a message and we return all phone calls. And thank you to the city council. It's been great working with all you guys, and all the things, for all the things you taught me over the years, I truly appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
The last two recipients, one's a memorial, and it's to Ms. Nusen. And we honored Ms. Nusen as the first woman elected to serve on Annapolis City Council. We tried to reach her daughter today, and we were unsuccessful, so we know she lives in Alderman Peown's ward, so at some point we will find her and deliver this. And the last one was to Ms. Ellen Moyer, and we honor her tonight for being the first woman mayor in the 300-year history of Annapolis. Your career in public service spanned more than 40 years, and we applaud your involvement as a two-term representative for Ward 8, prior to serving two terms as mayor of Annapolis. And Ms. Moyer's not here tonight. And just to end, I don't want to forget my colleagues on the city council, the two Alderwomen. I don't want them to go away angry at me also. Alderwoman Rhonda Pendell-Charles, Ward 3, Alderwoman Sheila Finlayson, Ward 4, we appreciate your service as well, continued service as well. All department heads, all department heads and anybody else of the female persuasion who works here for the city of Annapolis, you are also honored as well. Thank you, thank you very much.
Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Alderwoman Finlayson.
Thank you. Before we move on, just a few words about the ladies that were just before us. Many of you realize that when I came on the city council, Alderwoman Hoyle was sitting right here next to me. And there is no training when you become an alderman. It's, you kind of learn as you go. And so I want to take this opportunity to say thank you, Alderwoman Hoyle, for teaching me everything I know and helping me to get my C-legs as far as representing my constituencies in the city. And by the way, yesterday was her, can I tell the age? Her 81st birthday yesterday. Just a word about Alderwoman Carter. She won the first, her election as a write-in candidate. That was history in itself. Talking about a grassroots effort, she was the epitome of a grassroots candidate. So Cynthia, thank you for your service also. And our city clerk, and I had to ask her if she would mind if I told you a little bit about her story, but she began working in city hall as a custodian 19 years ago, was it 19 years ago? 23 years ago. And she took every opportunity to learn, and today she is a master city clerk, which means she has reached all the certifications necessary, and I believe she's only, she's one of only two in the state of Maryland who've reached that status. So we are all honored to have, and Regina keeps all of us straight. She knows the code inside and out. She's not political. She's, she keeps us straight, and so we, we thank you. We thank all of the ladies being honored tonight.
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is legislative actions on first readers, beginning with Resolution R 1417 National Women's History Month 2017 for the purpose of recognizing the month of March as National Women's History Month and honoring the contributions of women who have served on the Annapolis City Council and in other important ways for the city of Annapolis.
Is there a motion to adopt R 1417 on First Reader? Any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to get a motion to suspend the rules so we can pass this tonight.
All right. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules.
Second?
Uh-oh.
First, we have to say aye to adopting on First Reader. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Now, is there a motion to suspend the rules to allow the passage of a resolution at the meeting of its introduction?
Move to suspend the rules.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to adopt R 1417 on Second Reader?
So move.
Second?
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Panalitis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Pendell-Charles.
Aye.
Alderwoman Finlayson.
Aye.
Alderman Lippman.
Aye.
Alderman Kirby.
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderwoman Budd.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peown.
Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with reports by committee.
Is there any order person that would like to present a report? Alderman Peown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic Matters Committee met last week, and we had five pieces of legislation, three of which we recommended favorably, one we elected to return without action, and one we recommended with amendments. The Forest Conservation, Reforestation Act 03816 was returned without action. 0917 we recommended favorably, 01017 recommended with two minor amendments. R 1117 we recommended favorably, as we did with R 1217 City Sponsored Special Events. We will meet again on April the 10th at 6:30 PM right here in these chambers. The public is invited. We will be dealing with matters of interest to us at that time. Thank you.
Alderman Budd?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council and the public, the Transportation Committee met on March 7th. We considered three pieces of legislation. Before us tonight is 0717, removing Archwood and Smith from Parking District 3. The committee gave that piece of legislation a favorable endorsement. We considered, we actually considered a couple of other pieces of legislation, gave them favorable endorsements. They're in front of other committees at the moment, and will be coming back to the council at a future date. The next meeting of the Transportation Committee is April 18th in these chambers at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. Alderman Kirby?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. March 27, Housing Human Welfare, Housing Community Development. We met here in chambers. We reviewed some recommendations for community development, Black Grant, and we don't yet know. know what our funding's going to be coming out of Washington for this fiscal year. So what we did do in anticipation of holding it level, we level-funded most of the service organizations that applied last year. We just funded them at that same level. I believe, is it, can they locate somewhere? Okay. So the full council has not received it yet, simply because we don't know what's coming out of Washington. But if you look at the last year numbers, we funded just about every organization on a level funding. So if they received it last year, if we get that type of money out of Washington, then they can at least expect to receive level funding. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. The Public Safety Committee met on March 20th, 5 o'clock, here in council chambers. We took up three pieces of legislation, 0517, Equal Protection of Law in Annapolis, and R. 717, Equal Protection Commission. Both of those pieces of legislation were postponed until the April meeting. We also gave a favorable recommendation to 0717, removing Archwood and Smith from Parking District 3. We had an update from Fire Chief Stokes and Deputy Fire Chief Simmons on their core values, as well as all of their programs, the SAFER grant, concentration of the recruitment effort. You may recall that we were recruiting 12 new firefighters in the City of Annapolis. There was an extensive recruitment effort in each ward, and we had over 300 candidates apply for those 12 positions, which was excellent. Out of the 12 that were hired, four are city residents, so again, we're very pleased. And they are now in their training camp, and they should be on the street, I believe, within eight weeks. We also heard from the Police Department. Acting Chief Baker talked about their recruitment efforts, and they are looking to bring on, I believe, eight new police officers, 10, I'm sorry, 10 new police officers. So they're still going through their recruitment process. We had an update on the use of the 1.25 million. Body cameras should be on the street by June, and he also reviewed core values of the Police Department. The next meeting of the Public Safety Committee is on April 10th, here in council chambers at 5 o'clock. And Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'd like to report briefly on LGAG. LGAG is the Local Government Advisory Committee on which I serve, made up of elected officials from all of the Chesapeake Bay headwaters states, Maryland, Virginia, Delaware, New York, West Virginia, and Washington DC. We met for three days last week at King George, had a wonderful tour of the new wastewater treatment plant in King George. Can't wait to show them our new plant when it comes. But we had a very good discussion with Vice Director De Pasqual Nick, who is with the EPA, to try to find out where we stand and what is happening with EPA, especially as their funding is a focal point for the current president as an area to cut. So stay tuned, and I'll bring back more information as I get it. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? All right. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
During comments by the general public, you can address the council on anything that's not already scheduled for a public hearing. So if you came here tonight to talk about Chesapeake Marine Tours, the Market House, tenant solicitation of the Market House amendments, those public hearings will be immediately following this one. The first three people signed up to speak, Earl Bradley, Harold Sherman, and Rick Kissel. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Earl Bradley. I live at 940 Eastport. My name is Earl Bradley. I live at 940 Bay Forest Court, Annapolis, Maryland, just inside the city boundaries. I am here tonight speaking as the Chair of the Andaluna Group of the Sierra Club, and we are urging that the city council take a final vote in support of Ordinance 3816, the Forest Conservation No-Loss, No-Net Loss Legislation. This ordinance will enact the provisions deleted from the city's Forest Conservation ordinance due to the opposition Department Natural Resources and desire not to further delay implementation of the basic ordinance. As you know, the Attorney General has supported the city passing some regulations, and now the General Assembly is passing legislation making it explicit that local governments have the right to enact provisions stronger than the state, so that issue should be resolved. We believe there's no, no, now is the time to take action on this legislation. The No-Net Loss requirement was excessively discussed at the time of the original Forest Conservation Legend and has been given detailed examination since then. Therefore, the potential reforestation sites have been identified, so there's no reason for any further delay on this legislation, and we urge you to vote yes on this bill tonight. And let's pass this and move on to protection of the city's forest resources. Thank you. And thank you for all the efforts you've done on behalf of this issue.
I live at 301 Burnside Street, Eastport. I'm the initiator and editor of the website, Eastport Define, and I'm speaking in favor of Forest Conservation Legislation. And if you don't mind, I'll be brief. What do trees do for air breathers? Trees produce oxygen. There would be no us without our trees. What do trees do for the soil? Trees clean the soil. They absorb dangerous chemicals and other pollutants. Trees fight soil erosion. Their roots binding the soil. Flesh flooding can be dramatically reduced by a forest. Trees are carbon sinks, absorbing and locking away carbon dioxide in their wood, roots, and leaves. Trees also control noise pollution and may add value to the properties and neighborhoods they beautify. Our tree canopy is vital to our well-being, and once again, without trees, there would be no us. And even with the approval of this legislation, as recently as this weekend, as Alderman Finlayson noted, the new administration budget proposals would dramatically impact, in a very negative way, the entire Chesapeake watershed. So while we may be doing things in Annapolis to protect the forest, our forests and waterways are under significant threat. So when we do the right thing here, we can't sit back and rest on our laurels. We have to be of leadership and protect the watershed. Thank you.
My name is Rick Kissel. I live at 717 Warren Drive. I'm speaking for Ordinance 03816, Otherwise Known As No-Net Loss. I'm an eighth, I'm in my eighth year as a resident of Annapolis. I absolutely love it here. I've been aware of Annapolis and treasured it many, many, many years ahead of that time. I actually learned to sail in a Flying Scott right here in Annapolis over 40 years ago. I have had an intimate relationship with the environment through sailing, through the Coast Guard Auxiliary, where I was an auxiliary for 23 years. We used to come down in this area to do patrols, and we'd anchor, not anchor, tie off of the Eagle Alley and go have lunch. So Annapolis, to me, has always been a wonderful, beautiful place. I want to say a couple things about what I've been doing since I've been living in Annapolis. This is really to give you some indication of what I've been involved in, what's important to me, and how I have, how I spend my time, a lot of it. I'm a member of the Annapolis Environmental Commission, Vice Chair. I'm not speaking for the commission, but I believe all the commissioners feel, as I do, about this No-Net Loss. We've been working on it for a number of years. I am Vice Chair of the Anarodol Sierra Club, have been for a few years. And again, the members, and I don't know, I mean, there are 1,400 members of the Sierra Club in Annapolis, I mean, in Anarodol County. Anarodol County's over 1,400 members. I obviously don't know, there are many of them, but I certainly know the Executive Commission Committee, of which I've been serving for a number of years. I'm a member, in fact, I'm a founding board member, of the Back Creek Conservancy, the rebirth of it, which our motto is, "We speak for the creek." That takes, you know, it takes a loud voice to speak for the creek, and it needs it. It needs it. I mean, in those 40 years that I've been intimately involved with the area and the environment around here, you know, you used to be able to go swimming wherever you wanted to. No, 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 no. My grandchildren probably won't be able to go swimming here, and not in Back Creek. My great-grandchildren, and certainly I'll never go there, I'll never swim there, but I still have a passion, I mean, a real passion, for the environment. We have to, we really have to do what's right for the environment. One more item, that's Arlington Echo Watershed Stewart's Academy. I'm a graduate of their third class, I'm a Master Watershed Stewart. So, you know, that's where I'm putting my energy and my commitment. And this issue is huge, and I just want to quickly, you probably don't know this, maybe you do, maybe you don't, this is a report on Annapolis' present and potential urban tree canopy, prepared, it's a DNR publication, prepared for the Honorable Ellen O. Moyer, June 7th, 2006. Now, my background, I'm an engineer by profession, by training. I like numbers. I like data. This document, 17 pages, and I'm not going to read very many of them, has a lot of data that's pertinent now, it's 10 years old, but it's still pertinent. It lays out all of the potential areas, and I just, one brief, one comment, one brief paragraph on this that I want to read. "We recommend," that's this group that wrote this, "that Annapolis adopt a 50% urban tree canopy to be obtained by 2036." And this corresponds to being able to utilize 25% of the area that this report found is available for enlarging the tree canopy. 25%. Now, in that time, is that my buzzer? Oh, my God. I'm nowhere through. Just a quick one. At that time, the urban tree canopy was 41%. The possibility was 37%. The only real increase we've had has been due to annexation. The, we need this bill to pass if we're going to ever get to 50%. Thank you very much.
And thank you for all the volunteer work that you do for this city. The next three people signed up to speak, Alexis Viegas, Chris Mossberry, and Elaine Lutz.
I'm Alexis Viegas. I live at 8 Edgewood Green. You actually postponed what I was going to speak on, but it's R-17, which is the city-sponsored special event waiving certain fees. As the VP of Community Development for the Annapolis State Seas and the planner of the last two grand illuminations, I just wanted to say that we appreciate that certain fees are waived, because everything we do is all volunteer-based and based off of donations we receive. So any way that events can become more affordable for us, that makes it so we can do more events in the community. So we appreciate the city helping us out where they can. We appreciate Felicia helping us with our permits every year, and I just wanted to say thank you, and I think, obviously, there won't be any issue, but I just want to say thank you.
Apologize for my handwriting, Mr. Mayor. It's Mossberg, B-U-R-G. Sorry. Anyway, I have no prepared remarks. I didn't even know I was coming to earlier today, and I found out everyone was going to be in one place at one time. I'm here to talk about settled federal law, Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act, passed by large majorities of both Houses of Congress, reinforced several times. I'm going to be extremely vague. I was upset earlier today thinking about certain events and that sort of thing, but it's been a wonderful meeting. So here's what I really want to say, is that everybody that I have spoken with displays a fundamental ignorance of Title II. Most of them think it's just architectural, of which there are many violations here in Annapolis that are going unaddressed, and they could be addressed quite easily. That seems to be the easiest thing, have a conversation with somebody about, because we're sick of watching people fall as they try to get down streets that should be better cared for. There's a lot of easy solutions, doesn't seem to be addressed. The second one is procedural. Most people think, well, I see a handicap ramp rail by the elevators, and that's the law. Well, they don't know that. Effective communication is the responsibility of the provider of the public service. Not a choice, it's a responsibility under federal statute of civil rights legislation. So unfortunately, if you do happen to have a problem and call in, you end up in an uncomfortable scenario where you ask, someone like myself with a severe learning disability, evidence of my handwriting, sorry, and you say, you ask for the accommodation, but then they don't know what it is, and the next thing you know, you're saying, trying to explain something to them, and it proceeds power shift, and they're like, you're not calling me up and telling me what to do. But unfortunately, at the other end of the line is a person that does not know the law that is 25, over 25 years old. I came here to make sure you all knew that, because I didn't know if you were aware that it seems many don't know, and you have a responsibility to train. Unfortunately, the enforcement mechanisms provided by Congress are two. One, the Department of Justice can suddenly decide to come in and do something about it. There are As long as you understand that. That's all I have to say. I think you all have some research to do, based on a great number of hours of research that I have. Thank you.
If I could just respond to that briefly. I know that our ADA coordinator, who is fully aware and fully briefed of the sections you're talking about, Kyle Tibbs, gave you an official response. Now, you may not have liked your response he gave, but he did talk with you, and he is knowledgeable about the law. Now, if you have a further specific complaint or-
I wasn't trying to be specific tonight, not to-
Well, no, and I-
I wasn't trying to be specific.
I wouldn't do that publicly. But you've also spoken with my office-
It's not related to that. And by the way, Mr. Tibbs, when asked by me personally, someone sitting next to me, for a Title II Americans with Disabilities Act accommodation, so I could take notes the way that I have to, by reason of my disability, he outright refused more than four times in a row, and then hung the phone up, a violation of the ADA. So I'm not here to get specific or talk about a bad exchange. It got bad because the law is an ignorance to many, and I'm not naming names, and I'm saying this only because, I'll tell you my point. With any luck, by the first of the new year, I'll be in California. I can't take the winter anymore. But what I would say is that there is a great, well, about thirty-eight people in my First Amendment Assembly, that's not a church, it's a gathering on this issue, and they are out of patience. And I love the city of Annapolis, I think every street's beautiful. There's some things that just cannot be done. Now, I understand that, I'm talking architecturally. However, when you hand over, say, for instance, the parking to a private company, the instrumentations are also covered under Title II, okay? So I watch people that don't have a disability struggle with those machines. Now, he's shaking his head over there, and they're looking at it, and they're doing the thing, and I'm like, okay, I know I graduated high school with a fourth grade reading level, okay? And I know I still reverse all my stuff, but I'm watching normal people go through it. I think you heard me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berg? Mr. Berg?
Okay? I'm- I'm going to ask you a question-
Certainly.
Because you have been very vague, and we, as the council, don't know how to begin to address your concerns without knowing a little more specific.
I cannot be more specific at this time without-
Okay.
I don't want to be more specific, because that is just not fair. We're not having specific things here. And to my knowledge, all of you, mayor included, were ignorant of this to this very day. I guess I'm tired of having harassment techniques being used against me when I bring up civil rights legislation, just because they've never heard of it, type of thing. That's procedural, and then you've got the architectural, and I was in pain management for about eight years, I had to use a cane. This is a great workout around here. I've got a back thing, and I see so many people struggling, and there are some streets you never see anybody. And so I just think you should pay attention to it, and I don't want anybody to say later, oh, yeah, that twenty-five-year-old civil rights legislation, we forgot to make sure our staff was trained on the standards of effective communication according to the Department of Justice. It's right there online, anybody can look it up. I feel I would do harm-
Okay.
-to someone that may not deserve it by mentioning a name or an exchange. I don't want to go down that road. But I didn't come here lightly, and it just so happens, I didn't plan on being an expert on this, it just, after being pushed around for a long time, I started to research the law. I had no idea the law was on my side, and then I started to bring it up, not just here, but many places. And the first thing you hear when you bring up and you ask for the accommodation is, a what? A who? And then, well, you start to take, look, I don't need to get involved, what, you know, and the next thing you know, you're trying to talk over, it just goes downhill. Once again, the responsibility for effective communication is the provider of the public service. It's never the disabled.
And that is our role, to provide a customer service. Mr. Andrews, may I call upon you to meet with Mr. Berg and find out what it is that we could be doing differently?
And I would like to apologize to the mayor's office, I know I came off rude, but sometimes when I detect somebody doesn't know something, after so many years of this, I will be a little bit, perhaps too rude, only because I want them to get a little mad and go look it up on their iPhone, go, I know this guy was full of it, just if only to find out I'm right, please, let's engage and follow the civil rights legislation. Because there was no federal prohibition on discrimination against the able, disabled before nineteen ninety. So, you know, it's twenty-five years, a lot of people have been patient, perhaps we could actually start following the federal civil rights legislation.
Thank you. Make sure you exchange information with Mr. Andrews, our city manager.
Good pleasure. Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Elaine Lutz. On behalf of Chesapeake Bay Foundation and our hundreds of Annapolis members, I am here to urge your favorable vote on ordinance 3816. You're probably aware of the environmental benefits of forests, which act as our natural filters for air and water, prevent erosion, provide habitat, and reduce local climate impacts. You may not be as familiar with the real economic benefit that forests provide. Prince George's County recently found that their forests remove 4.3 billion gallons of polluted runoff a year, which would cost taxpayers twelve point eight billion dollars to replace those services should they lose those forests. Cecil County similarly found that their forests provided over twelve thousand dollars in economic value per acre per year. These are very real costs, especially in the city of Annapolis, when the taxpayers are paying to mediate, remediate and reduce stormwater pollution. Perhaps most importantly, the USDA found that one acre of forest provide oxygen for eighteen people per day. I don't think you can really put a value on that. So each acre that is given away for free, as is the current practice under the FCA, where we're giving up seventy-five percent of the forest with no mitigation and no replacement, that pushes these costs on to the taxpayer. So basically allowing the forest to be cut down without mitigation, without replacement, is bad economic policy, as well as the bad public health and environmental policy. For these reasons, we'd urge your favorable vote, and I appreciate the time and the energy that I know all of you have spent on this issue for the past four or more years, as I know I've been in front of you saying this a lot, and I look forward to a positive result tonight. Thank you.
The next three people signed up to speak are John Butler, Paul Murphy, and Ben Alexandro.
My name is John Butler. I live at 407 Third Street. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I am here to support the FCA No Net Loss Provision Ordinance 03816. The city needs this modification to the FCA, and I would like to thank the sponsors of the ordinance for bringing it to the council. Alderman Littman, Alderman Arnett, Alderman Payone, Alderwoman Pindell Charles, and Mayor Panides. That's two Republicans and three Democrats. A truly bipartisan-sponsored ordinance. That environmental protection is bipartisan should not be surprising, since the negative impacts of environmental degradation are also bipartisan. We all suffer from those degradation. Conversely, we all benefit from protecting the environment around us. I'm a member of the Eastport Yacht Club Environmental Committee. At EYC, we are taking a number of steps to be good stewards of the environment. Being good stewards of the environment is something we value. I shared information about this ordinance with members of the Environmental Committee, and all the responses I received were in favor of the ordinance. Just last Wednesday at EYC, we had the Back Creek Conservancy and Spa Creek Conservancy give presentations on the state of the creeks. Bottom line, the creeks are not healthy. You may already have known that. No subaquatic vegetation or even frogs could be found in Back Creek. According to the U.S. Forest Service, stormwater runoff is the number-one cause of stream impairment in urban areas. Trees and forests improve stream quality and watershed health primarily by decreasing the amount of stormwater runoff and pollutants that reaches our local waters. Clearly, part of the solution to improving the health of Back and Spa creeks will be to increase the tree canopy in Annapolis. While this ordinance does not increase our tree canopy, it does attempt to preserve the existing tree canopy, a necessary step in that direction. We care about the health of our creeks and the Chesapeake Bay into which they feed. With the Chesapeake Bay Program under attack by the current administration in Washington, we need to be responsible stewards of the environment more than ever and take action locally. I urge those of you who are not sponsors to join the sponsors and vote yes on this ordinance. I think the vote should be unanimous. Saving our trees is good for Annapolis, and do it now. Thank you.
As a member of the AEC for the last five years, I'd like to thank Aldermans Arnett, Pindell Charles, Payone, and Littman, along with our mayor, for working to get the No Net Loss provision to where it is now. For half a decade, I've watched the AEC work to strengthen the forest production with input from developers, residents who are concerned about water quality, air quality, and it's interesting fact that there are no frogs, and, you know, Back Creek's pretty large, and you can't even have one frog in there. That should be telling. But we've had six public sessions, we've had input from the developers and concerned citizens, and the current legislation has the support of the CBF, Chesapeake Conservancy, SPA and Back Creek, Annapolis Green, the Eastport Civic Eco Action, along with other organizations. While this process has been a little longer than we had anticipated, we feel the AEC, the city, has a solid, balanced piece of legislation now that we look forward to you passing. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ben Alexandro, and I'm the Water Policy Advocate for the Maryland League of Conservation Voters, which is located at 30 West Street. And in the interest of time, I'll be very brief. Basically, everything I wanted to say has already been stated, so I just want to thank the sponsors of 3816 and their efforts for no net loss of forests and for economic, environmental, and social benefits and reasons. We very much support this bill and hope that there is a favorable vote tonight, and thank you so much for your support of it as well.
The last two speakers are Tom Zolper and Forrest Mays.
Good evening, Tom Zolper, 789 Fairview Avenue, Annapolis. I just want to say thank you to the council members and to the mayor for your support of the No Net Loss Bill. Very appreciative. You're not going to be the first, but you're going to be one of the first, and sometimes that can make you uncomfortable, you know, where's everybody else? But I think more than anything right now in this country, we need that kind of leadership. I think in a year's time, two years' time, you could be one of many, many, many municipalities and counties in the state that are doing this. It's just legislation that really makes sense. You cut down an acre, you replant an acre. But to be first is tough, so for that, I'm really thankful. Thank you.
That's why I said Forrest, Mays, and I'm going to be talking on the Forest Conservation Act. Just want to see if you guys are listening up here. First of all, I'm really humbled to come to this meeting tonight and to see from the five-year-old entrepreneur teaching me that it's important to be involved in your community and helping things, to the eighty-one, I guess, year-old grandmother also, who has been involved in public service here. And so for me to come out here and drag myself to this and say, okay, I've got to say something, you know, and I appreciate all of you who do the work that you do here, I don't want you to think I don't. But I am here specifically to speak on the No Net Loss part of the Forest Conservation Act. I think there are three good reasons, and Elaine Lutz of the Chesapeake Bay Foundation cited two very good ones, public health and economics, things that you guys are very, very interested in, and you need those reasons to back this up. I suppose now you already understand what the No Net Loss means. It means that we're going to carve out something new for Annapolis, we're going to make a name for ourselves that says, look, we think the environment is important, and we think that saving forests is important. And we save forests by saving trees somewhat, and that's what this bill is going to do for us at this point. So the three reasons is, again, are public health, economic, and for the people of Annapolis, because those things help us. And if we don't have that aspect in our life, if we don't have trees, if we don't have forests, if we don't have a tree canopy, we are much the less forest. And the people that have put work into it, I think, you know, deserve credit for at least looking at it and saying, look, we can do something better than we have been doing. And I know Annapolis doesn't have a lot of forests. We have one hundred and ten acres of Crystal Spring, a priority forest. That's the biggest thing going on right now. There's other small ones that include lots of trees, but if you can find it, even, and I heard even tonight, you suspended the rules, so you could vote on something. But I think that the time has come, I mean, the iron is hot, time to vote, and vote to put this on the record for Annapolis to stand for something very, very great, and I think you'll be proud of it. I think your children will be proud of it, and it's a good moral thing to do for you as well. So I would just urge you to do that at this point tonight, and give my full weight and support behind it. Thank you.
Mr. Mays was the last person signed up to speak. If you'd like to address the council on this subject, or any subject, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Rob Savage, 12 Windus Per Lane. And first, I would like to say thank you, you know, this is the second tree ordinance you've considered in the past eight, nine months, and I think, you know, if this passes together, you know, they will both help take a large step towards helping us clean up our waterways. So I'm here, I just wanted to address, I heard a couple murmurings about a possible delay, and I just wanted to see if I could address some of the concerns that I heard come out of that and some other general concerns that I've heard. And, you know, I think one of the reasons, concerns people had when they were talking about a delay was that they weren't sure we had enough space to reforest. I know I've made this argument to you before, but I'll just summarize to try to make the point that I believe we have sufficient areas to reforest and to expand our urban tree canopy. So I'll give you two reports, two numbers. There's the 2006 report, which Rick Kissel mentioned, and that was from the one we made, agreement we made with DNR and the Chesapeake Bay Program. University of Vermont data, that showed, they estimated three hundred and ninety-five acres of space available to expand our urban tree canopy. And so actually, that's still on the low end, and their estimate actually went up above a thousand acres. Now, if you look at the Annapolis Environmental Commission's report, which they did with the Chesapeake Conservancy, they estimated about three hundred and twenty-four acres that are available for reforestation, with many more available to expand our urban tree canopy. And I make that distinction because reforestation is, you do need large areas, because that's about a hundred trees per acre. For urban tree expansion, you could do that along a street if we have the space. And so, again, the Environmental Commission estimated three hundred and twenty-four acres, and on one of the maps they submitted, areas were circled, sort of identifying some of these areas that they and I helped give them some advice in terms of, that we considered to be available for reforestation. And so just to, again, explain what areas are- And so just to, again, explain what areas are available, and if you look at the map, the areas that were excluded were areas that already had, say, ballfields that really wouldn't make sense for reforestation. The areas that were circled were areas next to schools that actually did not have any kind of active use. There were empty lots that were available for potentially purchase by the city or another or by the developer. There are also just other private lots and city right-of-ways that had large swaths of open space. And so just to go into how the reforestation process works, this is not a, it's a completely voluntary process. If a developer wants to put, they need to go to private property owner or the city to get permission to do reforestation on their property. Sometimes they'll actually give a financial incentive to do so. So I want to go also just sort of say, another reason why I ask you not to delay this is because a number of us in the audience have gone through, and many of you have gone through the process, and put a lot of time and effort into this, but myself and others have spent, you know, at least six months here, going to two planning commission meetings, we've been to three special committee meetings for the council, we've been to the council public hearing on this ordinance. And so we put in a lot of time and effort trying to work through this, and it's shown. I mean, this is, this isn't exactly my first choice in terms of how the ordinance would look, but Alderman Littman ended up compromising quite a bit in terms of trying to meet some of the concerns that he's heard from you, from what I gather, but also people in the audience. So I ask you to respect that process that has been going on. And I'd just like to sort of address a couple other points. One of them, I heard a concern that this might be considered taking of the developer's property. And I just want to reiterate the point that this ordinance would not ban, prohibit, or prevent any kind of forest clearing. All it does is give an incentive, and as much as I might like it to do that, that's not what this does. All this does is create an incentive towards the developer protecting more forests than they're required to on the property. Now, it does increase the cost a little bit because they will have to do more reforestation, but this is an important point. There are sort of four different outs the developer has to that. If they have trouble doing reforestation, they can pay into the fee in lieu, or number two, they can actually go and do urban tree canopy expansion along a street instead of reforestation. They can protect property from development by putting conservation easement on the properties, and they can, I'm blanking on the last one there, but they have a number of outs. And I'll just end by saying, you know, the city's own data sort of shows that we are losing forests under the current system. I'd just like to encourage you to go ahead and pass this. It's important to our water quality, as people have gone into, and, you know, as I've said before, this is a great step towards putting conservation back into the Forest Conservation Act. So thank you very much for your time and attention to this.
Hello, my name is Kurt Regal. I'd like to speak to you about the no-net-loss provision that you are considering tonight. First of all, thank you, all of the sponsors. The count of sponsors is encouraging, and we hope that you in fact will enact this ordinance tonight. This is the other shoe of a two-shoe effort that you have made, and I think that the no-net-loss provision is essential for implementing a forest conservation act that will serve Annapolis well. I have little of substance to add beyond which what has already been said tonight, but I do thank those in the audience who appeared before the council. I think their advice is impassioned, I think it's wise, and I think you should act on it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Seeing no motion, I declare comments by the general public closed.
My name is Natalie Powell. I live in Eastport. I've been in Anaronna County for quite some time. My daughter Tiffany Powell attended Broadneck High School two summers ago. She worked with Anaronna County and the Board of Ed. They planted thousands of trees around Anaronna County at all the elementary schools, and she wrote a book, and it's on the website for the children. We need these trees, your hunters, your fishermen, your children, your grandchildren, your great-grandchildren. You're speaking for them right now, and thank you so much for listening to all of us, and it's in your hands. The water is polluted, and there are dead zones in the bay. For every acre of trees that are taken down, it creates water runoff equal to 67 percent. I don't think you realize that, or maybe you do. When a developer clears, cuts a forested acre to build houses or stores, that new development permanently increases the storm water runoff on the once-forested acre by 67 percent. That puts the salinity level in the bay, in the tributaries, everywhere, the streams that starts in the brooks, it starts in the sewer, and it starts in the streets, it increases the phosphorus, everything into the bay. It's created such a dead zone out there, there is no life. This is oxygen, this is how we breathe, this is, it's just not for recreation. This is for years and years to come. So I just didn't know if you knew those numbers, 67 percent. And currently, a developer, under the extent practical, it's called, the counter requires the developer to design storm water controls that mimic the original forested land cover to the extent practical. What does that mean, extent practical? It means this, it is 1 percent of that 67 percent. The soft language in the county code allows the developers to take advantage of ambiguous interpretations and build more houses while at the same time undersizing the storm controls. There's no way for us to control it, and a developer can't even control it. We need you to vote and to help us. It's in your hands. But those are the numbers. That water rushing into every creek, every sewer, into the bay, it goes there. It increases the salinity. You can't get it back once it's there, and all we're doing is building more. So please, please help us, and we appreciate you very much. It's in your heart and in your hands. Thank you.
Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is update from the mayor.
All right. Had a busy couple weeks so far. Want to let you know that we had two ribbon cuttings that went on recently. The first was for Brown Mustache Coffee on Maryland Avenue. It's locally owned independent coffee shop that provides residents and visitors with locally roasted coffee, locally sourced baked goods, and small fare, and I'm glad they chose Annapolis. Actually had a chance to taste some of their tea, and it was delicious. We also did a ribbon cutting for the Old Fox Bookstore on Maryland Avenue as well. I guess I'm done. We had Maryland Day this weekend in Annapolis. It was great weather. I look forward every year to going down there and starting the Pledge of Allegiance when they raised the flag on City Dock. I want to thank Carol Benson and the Four Rivers for their impressive work to make Maryland Day and the weekend a great success. We mentioned earlier, I was joined by Governor Larry Hogan to celebrate the 150th anniversary of the Annapolis Police Department. Great to receive these kind gifts from them. Also had a chance to go to the Annapolis Oyster Roast and Sock Burning on Sunday, March the 18th. For those of you who haven't been, I highly recommend it. I know Alderman Arnett was down there with me. They do an oyster tasting, which is like something you could never even imagine. I mean, buffalo oysters, oysters cooked 100 ways I've never had, and I lived here my whole life, so highly encourage anyone to go down, and it's for a philanthropic cause. All the money's donated to the Maritime Museum. And I also want to recognize four people who retired from the Annapolis Fire Department for their commitment and dedication to the city and its citizens. Deputy Chief Douglas Romali, who had 31 years of service to the city of Annapolis. We had Battalion Chief Richard D. Butler, 33 years. Lieutenant Endon Avery, 43 years. And Lieutenant Joseph Crane, who had 25 years of service to Annapolis. And that concludes my update.
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar include first readers, oh 1817, personal care establishments in the PM District, oh 1917, removing dock and market health enterprise funds. On second reader, you have oh 717, removing Archwood and Smith from Parking District Three, oh 917, lease of city property, fall 2021 through 2026 boat shows, and R 1117, intinerate merchant sales in Historic District for 2017. That's the end of consent calendar items.
Is there any item you would like to have removed from the consent calendar? Hearing no objection, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So move.
In discussion? Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor, panel ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pendell-Church?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Payon?
Aye. The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is business and miscellaneous, beginning with GT 917, a transfer from salaries, benefits, rent, and leases, and vehicle replacement transfer to purchase of a patrol boat.
Is there a motion to approve GT 9-17?
So move.
For a second?
Right.
In discussion? Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we postpone consideration of this and ask for it to be assigned to the Environmental Matters Committee. A number of questions that I'd like to be able to exchange with the Harbor Master in the committee format is the appropriate forum, and we have plenty of time on the next agenda. It's best to get to this next meeting and be able to have it come right back to the city council.
Is there any particular thing you could bring up now or why we would delay such an important?
Sure, sure. I have a number of questions. The justification in our pamphlet was very minimal. We did not see a demonstration that the stated high cost, high maintenance costs for the existing boats are unreasonable, were not cost-effective. We didn't see any explanation why the city couldn't just replace the existing engine instead of the whole boat. We didn't see whether there was exploration of grant funds for this. We didn't see whether, why a new boat should be addressed outside of the budget process. We didn't see why a less expensive boat wouldn't suffice. We didn't see why a new boat is being prioritized over other needs, including vehicle replacement. We also saw, what we did see is a line that the new boat could be used for search and rescue by the Harbor Master's office, but we did not see a demonstration that the Harbor Master's office needs a boat with that functionality, or that the office has the requisite training for that function, or more importantly, the authority to conduct search and rescue. We didn't see any explanation for why the city can't rely on the city's or county's fire department's search and rescue boats or abilities, or the police department. We also didn't see any demonstration that the Harbor Master has full-time staff capable to be trained and use these boats as opposed to the police and fire departments, which both do. So I would like to give the Harbor Master a chance to respond to all those questions and ask the committee to consider those questions.
I would say, in the future, if you could bring up those concerns before we're going to vote on it or make a transfer, that would be very helpful, and I could actually address probably every one of the concerns you had here. First, I would say, in terms of hiring, thinking Tommy Andrews Bethmok's probably been one of the best hires we've made in the city. Terms of needing a boat with a sailing capital...
I was, just to be clear, I wasn't questioning Bethmok as a Harbor Master, it was that she's got staff to, slightly different, I just wanted...
I understand, I'm just saying, her judgment on why she needed this. So one, the high cost of maintenance, I know there's a number of boat owners here and in the audience, every boat's very expensive, so the maintenance is very high. Terms of placing the engine, sometimes it's cheaper to buy a new boat, putting more money into an old one. The search and rescue component, she worked in DNR for a number of years, thought that's an important function, being the sailing capital, more people on the water now than ever before in our history of Annapolis. Being the sailing capital, that's important. In terms of costing out the fleet maintenance, she did an analysis of what the cost would be between those two. I know the former Harbor Master, Flip Walters, had called up and wanted to delay this, and I'm not sure his intentions or reasons why, but I have faith in Beth and the analysis that she's done on this. I think it's important that we move forward because we need to get the boat in operation, and if people aren't trained, Beth has her captain's license, and I think she certainly has the ability to train staff.
Mr. Mayor, I think all those, all these points may have good valid reasons, I'm not suggesting that they are conclusively, they don't exist and they can't be answered, but we have not been faced with that. We just got the agenda on Wednesday, got through the agenda expeditiously, and posted my questions, I have not gotten a response yet. Your points about the search and rescue didn't address that the Harbor Master, Harbor Master's Office does not have the authority to do search and rescue. It's not in the code, it's not granted by the city council, whereas police and fire departments do. So I think we have some fundamental questions. Again, I'm not looking for a long delay. Give the committee one answer, one committee meeting to address these questions, and we'll have it come right back.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would offer to my colleague, I don't know whether you saw the revised submission from the Harbor Master?
No, when did we get that?
It was in the packet, and we discussed it at the Finance Committee. The problem with the existing boat is it's not working. And the concern I have, and I admit I'm biased because I'm going to be out on the water soon, is that the boat we have is not functioning. The boat that they're planning on purchasing is powered by an outboard. If you can power, drive a boat, you can drive an outboard. I guess my question would be, when can we, because you and Jared and Ian and I are on it, can we meet this week in order to have this on the next Monday's agenda? Because Wednesday night races start soon, the nude regattas are coming up very quickly. We definitely need to have the Harbor Master out there. So I certainly always support any colleague's requests for delay for more information, and I will this, but I hope we can make an effort to have an environmental matters meeting next week before next Monday's council meeting, because there are a lot of important things that are going to be happening, and we really did hear from the Harbor Master's Office today about the boat is just not working, it can't even get up on plane. So pretty, pretty critical situation.
To answer your question, now the revision that was just posted today, it didn't note that it existed, let alone...
I think it was written in response to your questions.
Well, that's excellent. I do have some time this week, I'll be happy after this meeting to try to coordinate with you and the Harbor Master to meet this morning.
Alderman Payon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing that wasn't mentioned is that we have newfound jurisdiction in Weems Creek. That's a relatively long distance from the Harbor Master's Office, the downtown area, and it's particularly important that we get a patrol boat up and running, one that we have some confidence that will continue to run before voters move in for the summertime, whether it be legally or illegally. There is an increased need for that reason alone. Look, I'm ready to vote, it's a budget transfer, it doesn't involve additional money, it's simply transferring money from one area to another, and, you know, I suppose I don't mind putting it off for a week if they can get it done, but I don't see any reason, any good reason, not to vote tonight. Thank you.
Now that we've had debate, I second the motion.
Forward delay?
Yeah, I second for delay.
Alderman Finlayson?
Well, first of all, point of information, what's the motion on the floor?
To delay?
And next to most of them.
Okay, so you did second that.
Yes.
What is the timeline for purchasing the new boat? Do we know?
We have someone from the Harbor Master's Office here, so come forward and state your name, and maybe you can answer some of the questions. Don't mean to put you on the spot, but...
I'm David Street, Assistant Harbor Master.
Press, press the button.
Oh, David Street, okay. I'm David Street, Assistant Harbor Master. I'm here for Bethmok, who's on leave today. What was the issue?
What's the timeline for purchasing the new boat?
Well, we'd like to get it purchased as soon as this can get approved because we'd like to make it done in this fiscal year with the money that's available right now. This is, you know, a one-shot deal as far as getting the money to be able to do this. If, we should be able to get the boat by the summer if we can get it moving.
So if we approved it tonight, would you have it by the end of the month?
Oh, I would love to. I don't know about that quick, but it'd probably be very short.
Okay, so it's a short... Okay, so it's a short, relatively short turnaround from-
Once we get a purchase sort of going, and the manufacturer, dealer's right across on the other side of the aisle.
Okay, so it sounds like a one-week delay then isn't going to have a significant impact?
Well, I hope not.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's enough discussion. The motion is seconded. All in favor of delaying a week? Please say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is business miscellaneous, G A twenty-six seventeen, state revitalization program application for community legacy program in the amount of $200,000 from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development.
Is there a motion to approve G A twenty-seven seventeen?
So moved.
Second?
We don't have this before.
They just announced it at the Finance Committee meeting before we came in.
Right.
So with the Finance Committee, like, to update council?
Yeah.
Is it in the Finance Committee deck?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, this is a community legacy program funding, basically $200,000 that's coming from the state that is tied to the work of the Lighthouse Shelter's new restaurant to support their efforts there. So the Finance Committee spent a little time with Ms. Wellman this afternoon, and we approved it unanimously.
It's $200,000 out of 2.1 million dollars, and there's no match on our part. The project is already started, so they kind of like to make sure they have that money.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is business miscellaneous, G A twenty-seven seventeen, Atlantic and Coastal Bays, 2010 Trust Fund Grant, in the amount of $175,000 from the Department of Natural Resources.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Sorry, can we hear about this? We haven't-
Sure. So this was another G A that was added because of the Finance Committee schedule that was just met this afternoon. Ms. Broadbent is here, she'd be happy to give you a little overview of this very good project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The grant that's on your agenda is for a project that was in our watershed improvement plan. We've talked to you about that a couple times. So when we had that plan done, there were about eighteen, sixteen or eighteen projects included in the watershed improvement plan, and because we were able to fund as part of that project to have some just preliminary concept level designs done, it made it much easier to turn those designs in to the granting agencies to get funded. So this is the first one. Racine Hodo in my office submitted that grant, and this will be to upgrade the pond that's in the Ambridge neighborhood. There are many neighborhoods throughout the city that have ponds or stormwater best management practices that are owned by the community, are the community's responsibility for maintenance, and some of them were built to the older standards, so they aren't something that we would be able to get any credit towards our permit. So this grant allows us to have that pond upgraded to today's pollution reduction standards. The city would get credit towards our TMDL and our permit, and we'll also be able to use the experience as an education program so that we can educate HOAs from across the city on what their options are for upgrading them, their responsibilities are for maintaining them, and just education in general about writing grants if they chose to do that. So this grant helps to pay back the money that you have put up for the watershed improvement plan, and we appreciate it. The community, I met with the Ambridge community at their annual meeting last Wednesday evening, and they are thrilled and express their thanks.
Ms. Broadbent, the grant looks like it's for $175,000, and then it says match is required. Or is it a full match?
It's an in-kind match, using the money that we've already used for that preliminary concept design has been accepted as our match.
In full?
Yes.
Fantastic. Good job. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
I would say, I mean, the hope is that it can be replicated in other parts of the city and other projects. I mean, that's the beauty of spending the money on the whip and putting it together and doing it in such detail. This hopefully is the first of a number of, so-
That's right, and it's the ability to get out there and educate the community before we're going to them and telling them what they need to do, what they have to do, what they're required to do. So I wanted to do something really proactive first before we start doing something that looks a little, sounds a little bit more like enforcement.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to reemphasize what Ms. Broadbent said, which is, this is the beginnings of the fruits of the water improvement plan, and watershed improvement plan, and I hope we see many more. But I also want to extend, I guess, apologies to my colleague, Alderman Littman. I think we don't want to entertain the practice of dropping these things on the council at the last minute. I felt okay with these two because I thought they were really good and that once you had a chance to know something about them, you would be comfortable, but I think we probably ought to not have a steady practice, or maybe never again, doing a committee meeting and then putting new things on the agenda. So I apologize, because I was part of the reason why finance was late. So we postponed, so.
I appreciate your comment, Alderman Arnett. Certainly, it's not helpful to not come to a council meeting not knowing that, you know, grants for this size are even being considered, not having any notice, a chance to review it in detail, so appreciate the comment.
And I appreciate you taking them up on short notice, at least for the grant from my part where we need to catch up a little bit on our schedule, so thank you.
Alderman Finlayson?
Um, yes, and this is off-topic, but not too far off-topic. And this is for our information. You mentioned the WIP, the Watershed Implementation Plan. In the event that the funding goes away from EPA, and about 60% of their funding comes back to local municipalities jurisdictions, we will still be responsible for the projects. That means that that will, all of it will impact our budget directly. So if EPA's funding is cut, that will not eliminate the WIP, it will not eliminate TMDLs, it only will mean that we will then be responsible for paying for it.
Well, or not do it.
But-
Or not do it.
We are required by law to do it by 2025 or 2026.
Right, for now.
I'm just, unfunded mandates are not uncommon, I'll just say.
Alderman Littman?
Thank you. Ms. Broadbent, real quickly, can you confirm, the city does have its own WIP as opposed to one that's just the county's WIP that we have to comply with?
We do indeed. We are our own separate jurisdiction, and we have our own separate permit and our own separate permit requirements.
If you don't mind me jumping ahead with a question that'll come up later, trees planted in the city help you comply with the WIP?
They should. There's still some issues with how exactly to calculate them, but yes, they do indeed. What I would point out to you is that we're a, we're a Phase Two community, so we're one that the permit requirements are just coming up for us, for the new permit, and the first requirement in there is to do an inventory of all the existing stormwater management and come up with a watershed improvement plan. That's what you funded. So we're already, you know, have a plan and a vision for what it is that we need to do. Staff will do everything we can to turn over rocks and look for funding. You know, the funding for this grant is from the Chesapeake Bay license plates. So this grant is from the Chesapeake Bay license plates. We've submitted another one that is from what was affectionately named the Flush Tax. So there's some real interest on the part of the state of Maryland and the Maryland elected bodies to make sure that there's some funding. You know, do we have to worry about the EPA funding? Sure, but there are some other sources, and we're just going to keep turning over rocks and looking for money. It helps us stretch out the money that you approved.
Thank you.
Alderman Finlayson?
Um, yeah, follow-up question, which is a follow-up question. We had this discussion in Economic Matters about our WIP and whether we were independent or part of the county, and I just received a list today, and Arundel County is listed, and maybe because they're MS two-
Phase one.
Phase one or phase two?
Phase one.
Okay. But the city was not listed. Now, I know they're adding 10 more cities, and we're not in that list either.
We're a Phase Two community, so we've always had our own, our own MS four, our own stormwater permit.
Okay, so-
So we continue to have one. We are, the Phase One communities are the counties largely, the ones with larger populations, the city of Baltimore, 100,000, 100,000, see, I said dollars too, 100,000 people or more. We're a smaller community, so we're in the second group, but we do indeed have our own permit.
Okay, well, correct me if I'm wrong, when Frank was working on this with the county, what he was working on was part of the county's WIP, not the city's independent WIP, no?
It's the city's.
Okay, I stand corrected?
The funding that all of you put forward in the capital improvement program was to fund our work on our watershed improvement plan. So we do indeed have our own, our own plan, our own vision forward, our own permit requirements.
Okay, all right, thank you.
We're going to put a little thermometer on our website so you can see where we are, but we've actually made some, some progress, and the permit requirements haven't started yet, so we're not in a bad place.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. We're going to take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 9 o'clock. The City Council is now back in session. Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Ordinance oh fourteen seventeen, lease of city property to Chesapeake Marine Tours Incorporated for the purpose of authorizing a lease of certain municipal property located in the city dock in Annapolis, Maryland, to Chesapeake Marine Tours Incorporated for certain periods of time from FY 2023 to 2027.
One person signed up to speak, and that's Debbie Goslin.
Good evening. Debbie Goslin, 980 AWAL, Annapolis, Maryland, 21403. Out of respect for your time and the hour, I won't take the whole three minutes. I've left you with a packet with some fun things about Watermark, and I look forward to seeing most of you in the committee meetings, and I'm available to answer any questions if you have them. But thank you for the opportunity to continue to work and sell Annapolis to our visitors. It's an easy thing to do.
Thank you. Is there any laws from the public who would like to testify? Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on oh fourteen seventeen closed. Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is Ordinance oh sixteen seventeen, market house tenant solicitation for the purpose of establishing a public process for selecting a market house tenant.
Two people signed up to speak, Bill Kardashian and Pat Zino. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bill Kardashian, and I reside at One Act in Place in Ward One. I'm here to, I'm here tonight to speak in favor of Ordinance sixteen seventeen to establish the bid process for the market house. I've lived in the city long enough to remember when rookie's market downtown in the market house was an eclectic collection of vendors and purveyors. Most of us know the turmoil that has engulfed the market house beginning after Hurricane Isabel in 2003. Failed promises, legal hassles, and a small fortune spent in renovations, and the list goes on. Then in 2012, Mayor Cohen attempted to snatch victory from the jaws of defeat after the effort to bring Lair Jackson's vision of the market house was withdrawn at the 11th hour. Subsequently, still another iteration of the market house was envisioned. Bids were solicited for a master leaseholder who would vet and select vendors for the market house. Richard Sheriff and his Fran Point Partners won the bid. That was in 2012. I've seen and reviewed that lease and was shocked to see that five years later, the lease was never finalized and never signed. The basic premise of the lease was for the market leaseholder, excuse me, for the master leaseholder to pay a nominal fee, manage the market house, and sublet to vendors. Of particular note was the sublease asked for a 9% override on the cumulative gross sales, when cumulative gross sales reached 1.5 million dollars. Just to clarify, that means all vendors, seven to eight individual businesses, would be required to aggregate their sales, provide them to the master leaseholder, and bear a 9% assessment on all sales over 1.5 million. It may come as no surprise, but so far as anyone knows, that 9% override has neither been assessed nor collected. I'm not suggesting anything nefarious happened. I'm suggesting the sales were so poor that no override was required by the vendors or earned by the city. There are probably many reasons financial performance for the market house has been so poor, has been so poor, from marketing to need to product selection, to you name it. For the most part, the market house and its vendors appeal mostly to tourists. Sure, we might stop in from time to time for a coffee or a gelato, but there is nothing that keeps residents from returning time and time again. As you begin the process for soliciting bids for the market house as of 2018, I hope you will consider uses that appeal to residents, not just tourists. We love our tourists, but downtown Annapolis is losing businesses that attract residents and discourage downtown living in this great city. I also want to suggest that any economic structure for the bid process be simplified. The idea of any override is overly ambitious and, in my view, unrealistic. Collect a fair triple net lease. If that term is unfamiliar to you, it means the tenant is responsible for paying utilities, insurance, and taxes. Frequently, it also includes the expense of leasehold improvements. By the way, the subject of property taxes was another surprise. If you check the property tax rules, you will see that the market house doesn't even appear, doesn't even appear as a legal entity. No tax ID means no property taxes applied or are paid. The market house is an iconic facility with a historic past. It occupies probably the most central and convenient location in town. For the past 15 years, the market house has languished as a facility. We need to restore it to its original purpose, a community market. It needn't be full-service market, but it should provide some prepared foods, carryout items, and enough food items to create a simple meal when provisioning a boat or a local residence kitchen. I suspect there will be many interested bidders. I encourage you to be thorough in your, in your evaluation and to favor the bids who are capable of bringing the market house back to life. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Pat Zino. My husband and I reside at 57 Cornhill Street, and I'm here to speak in support of Ordinance sixteen dash seventeen. We moved to the Historic District in 1994. The market house, while needing some upgrades to the building, seemed to be thriving with a variety of locally-owned businesses. Today, no one could describe it as thriving. I am not here to criticize the current management, the layout, or to second-guess the current management, but I do believe there is a far better use of our market house, and now is the time to have that discussion. When I Googled urban food market- When I Googled "urban food markets," I came up with some consistent messages. Market houses are a national, if not an international, trend. One article described them as a trend on overdrive. All the articles I read listed certain commonalities. Rehabbed old buildings reflecting local character, offering a broad variety of quality food and drink options, often including prepared foods that cater to today's demographics. Those who don't want to cook. I have it that hard. Anyway, many times, they are known as the places to go for interesting, high-quality, local food choices. They can be key centers of commerce and social life, and in some cities are the cornerstone to urban district revitalization. A perfect local example, Belvedere Square in North Baltimore. 10 years ago, this was a nearly empty shopping center in a somewhat downtrodden area of York Road. Today, it is thriving, and the food market has been the impetus. Market houses help urban areas differentiate themselves from suburban mixed-use developments and shopping malls that often include a variety of eating choices, which are frequently chain restaurants. Regarding our market house, when the subject comes up in conversation, I hear certain comments. First, the city should not be in this business and should sell the market house. I totally disagree with this. This is the central location in our historic district and too important not to have city oversight. Second, the market house is too small to be meaningful. I believe this is a failure of imagination. Under the right leadership, our market house can serve not only downtown residents but also tourists. It is one, it can be one more of the many reasons that people visit our cherished historic district. And let's not forget, in today's competitive atmosphere and with the reality of social media, word truly travels fast. Facebook, Instagram, Yelp, TripAdvisor, these are but some of the sources that people rely on for shopping and eating choices. These can make or break an establishment. Mediocrity is no longer an option in today's world. I believe ordinance 16-17 is the first step in providing a new vision as well as a thorough, transparent process for the revitalization of our own market house. I thank Alderman Budge for sponsoring this legislation and for taking on this difficult and sometimes controversial subject. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Seeing no motion, I declare the public hearing on 01617 closed. Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance 01717, market house amendments for the purpose of amending the market house policy to reflect a tenant and subtenant relationship, clarifying market house product and service policies, and removing the requirement for an enterprise fund.
Nobody was signed up in advance to speak. If you'd like to address the council, now is your opportunity. Before I close it, I just want to make a few comments on the market house. I've had the pleasure to read some of Ginger Doyle's books, and she wrote one on the market house and its four separate locations over the last 300 years. So I think it's a must-read when we have this conversation. We like to think sometimes that the last 10, 20 years or so are the only hard times of the market house, but that's not the case for the long haul. I also want to say, people come sometimes and say, here's exactly what the mix should be within the market house. And a lot of that is market-based. Market house, based on the market. It's going to determine what the uses are that succeed within there. Someone told me, you know, it's not like it used to be there's no fried chicken in the market house. And I said, not only is there fried chicken, Harvey Blonder brought the guy back who did the original fried chicken. Somebody said, there's no oysters. And I said, there's oysters back in the market house. So I think sometimes we're hard on the market house and always talk about the negatives but not the positives. So thank you, Mr. Blonder, for the investments you made in it. It was something that scared off most of the people. They don't want to get involved in this at all, and you took a stand and invested in it, so thank you for that. Comment? Alderman Littman?
Not on the subject, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say something before we get into second readers, if I can. The Environmental Matters Committee will be meeting this Thursday to take up the grant that was deferred earlier today. We'll be meeting at 1:30 here in council chambers.
Thank you. I declare the public hearing on 01717 closed. Madam City Attorney, would you please present the next item?
The next item on the agenda is legislative actions on second reader, beginning with Charter Amendment CA 117, collection of taxes for the purpose of removing the three-year limit for the city to collect property taxes, authorizing collection of taxes in the manner prescribed by the Annotated Code of Maryland, and removing the three-year bar to recovery for taxes not timely collected.
Is there a motion to adopt CA 1-17 on second reader?
Still move.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt 0317 on third reader?
Still move.
Is there a second?
There.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor, panelists.
Aye.
Alderman Pinnell-Tarrell.
Aye.
Alderman from Lason.
Aye.
Alderman Littman.
Aye.
Alderman Kirby.
Aye.
Alderman Saper.
Aye.
Alderman Arnett.
Aye.
Alderman Budge.
Aye.
Alderman Pan.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt oath? Or Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance 03816, forest conservation and reforestation for the purpose of prohibiting certain development projects from cutting or clearing certain forests within the city of Annapolis unless the applicant offsets that loss with newly planted acreage and providing for an appeal process.
Is there a motion to adopt 03816 on second reader? Still move. Under discussion, we have one amendment, and that's the Littman Revised Proposed Amendments. I'll let the sponsor speak to them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it might be helpful, I could start with the underlying ordinance, and then might be then the amendments will have better context, if that's okay?
That's fine.
So opening up the ordinance, the first change that this ordinance makes is on page 2. This is regarding appeals of forest conservation acts that were approved prior to the new Forest Conservation Act in September. That was at the request of Mr. Elson, and will have a limited applicability as old forest conservation acts are in a rearview mirror. The hard changes begin on page 8 of the ordinance, and on line 1 is the main, the big change. Page 8, line 1 of the ordinance, it changes the ratio from 1/4 to 1, to 1 to 1 for acreage of forest that must be replanted. The second thing that this ordinance does is take out, and this is referring to page 8, lines 14 through 27, takes out the credit. And how the credit works is, I have the easiest time explaining how it works by example. If we're talking about a hypothetical 100-acre parcel, and hypothetically, the developer is allowed to clear 20 acres of forest, how the credit works as currently written is, without any changes, is if the developer takes out only 15 of the 20 acres, the five acres that the developer did not take out, they get as a credit or a subtraction from the part of the reforestation they have to do. So that is, those are the main changes of the ordinance itself. We then had public testimony, sorry, we then had a planning commission, two planning commission meetings where they took testimony, came back to city council, we heard a public hearing as well, we heard more testimony. And from all of the inputs that we got, came up with the Littman Revised Proposed Amendments. Also, this has also been through three committees, and so there were some minor changes, that's why it's revised, as it made it through its committees. So the first thing amendments 1 and 2 do is actually put back that credit that I just said the ordinance took out. And the reason is, frankly, I think there are pros and cons to removing the credit and putting the credit back in. But the, I'm suggesting that we put it back in at the guidance of our staff, Mr. Gutwold and Ms. Broadbent, as well as public testimony that we received, because it rewards good behavior. And again, that good behavior might be if a developer is allowed to take out 20 acres and they don't take out five, that's a good thing. We'd rather than not have to remove forests only to have to replant, it's better to not have to remove it at all. So it rewards that good behavior. So once we consider putting the credit back in, we just need to make it revise it, and that's where you see in the first paragraph of paragraph 3, we changed 1/4 to 1, so it matches the no net loss concept. The second changes that the Littman amendments do is amendments 3 and 4. One refers to the reforestation calculations, one is the afforestation calculations, and it raises the minimum thresholds for preservation from 15 to 20%. And then we get to amendment, I guess, I'm sorry, amendment 5 does the same thing, I'm sorry, amendment 5 is the new issue. Amendment 5, so if you recall, we've had some discussion about whether reforestation should be required to be in the city or should be permitted to be outside the city as a secondary or even tertiary option. And through discussion, there was some consensus that replanting within the city would be better than allowing it to be outside the city. Personally, I see, again, I think there are pros and cons. I think either side of this issue are reasonable. On the one hand, if you're talking about with the same watershed, whether trees replanted are on one side of a political boundary or another, don't have a huge impact to the environment. And so in that sense, my inclination would be to allow replanting to be outside the city. But I was convinced to add this amendment because of, frankly, our staff's recommendations. The city has so many different requirements. We heard some discussion about the whip, there are stormwater issues, there are the tree canopy policy objective. All those things are not assisted if trees are planted outside of the political boundaries. And so that's why I think in the weight of it, I come out with the better is to add the amendment, require trees replanted within the city boundaries. But again, I think either side could be reasonable. And that's what the Littman amendments do. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Alderman Pan?
You know, what you said is that we prefer the reforestation to take place within the city, preferably within the same watershed. But under what circumstances would a developer be allowed to go outside of the city limits? Because in looking at the map, there's not an overwhelming amount of property that is available within the city. I'm not saying there isn't sufficient, but it's not a huge amount, no matter how you look at it. I was under the impression that as long as it was within the same watershed, that we would be allowed, a developer would be allowed to plant the trees outside of the city but within the watershed. Again, strong preference for within the city, but I don't see anything in here that tells me that if all else fails, he can go outside, he or she can go outside the city. Where is that here?
Sure. So in the underlying Forest Conservation Act that we passed in September, it lays out the preferential order. So that in itself wasn't changed in this ordinance, that's why you don't see it here. And in that, it starts with onsite is best, then within city limits is best, and then so on. But so your under-
That remains.
What's that?
That remains.
It would, but for this amendment. So it sounds like you're speaking in favor of the ordinance but not amendment number 5. And if Mr. Gutwold is here still, might want to come up to, oh, Ms. Broadbent is here too. Good. Those are the two people, frankly, that encouraged this amendment, that, so I would encourage you to ask their opinion of whether to include it or not. I think what you just said is reasonable. And like I said, I, so I was on the fence on this issue personally.
Do we need to move the amendment?
The amendment has been voted on, I think we're still discussing it.
But was there a motion? If I move the Littman amendments?
Second. All right. Thank you.
Good evening again. Maria Broadbent, Director of Office of Environmental Policy. I think one of the things that staff has always had to balance, when we talked about tree canopy, is the locations of where the trees would go. It's really for us right now, a matter of having the right tools to find the right places. There's some new technology out there. We've been working with Chesapeake Conservancy and submitted a grant not only to plant some trees in Ward 3, but also to develop an online interactive GIS tool that will help us locate places where more trees can be planted. I suspect that some of those locations are maybe on school property. Many of them are going to be, we're an urban or alter-urban environment, and many of them are going to be street trees. But I don't find it impossible, but it is going to be, it's going to take a little work to find the right places in the city. But if our ultimate goal is to increase our tree canopy, we don't increase it if we plant them outside.
Well, I understand all that, but my thinking is that it's easily possible, and it's possible in the not-too-distant future for sure, that reasonable efforts on the part of a developer may fail to find adequate spaces within the city. And I, I mean, it seems logical and reasonable to allow that developer to be able to put that in the county as long as it's in the same watershed. Now, if he still can't find anything, or she can't find anything, I don't know what you'd do at that point, but...
(laughing).
Well, the problem, it's a very big check we're talking about, though.
Pico, all Director of Planning, is that a, that is an option, though. I would just mention that if they can't find a location, there is fee and there's still available to them. And as time goes on, maybe there's banking opportunities, those kinds of things where they find land within the city that they designate. I think that's what Maria is talking about, and as we look toward the future, for, you know, trying to meet those objectives. So I, you know, with Alderman Littman, you could go either way with this. There's a lot of benefits to all of it, but the city has some challenges ahead of it, as mentioned earlier in this evening, and, you know, staying within the city and the jurisdictional boundaries is, will be nothing but a gain towards the city, so.
Well, that I understand, and that's, you know, but sometimes that, you know, we just may have to pay that price. I don't, I was under the impression that the amendment's allowed for putting this within the same watershed, and I suppose I got that confused with the original reforestation act, and that's on me, but this doesn't change my support for the overall, you know, 03816. But most of it I find to be quite reasonable, but I don't know about this part.
Alderman Kirby?
Yeah. And we talked about this earlier in the week, decentralization, do you, do you see that being a problem?
The individual, one, you know, one tree here, tree there, for meeting the objectives of the Forest Conservation Act and the ability for developers to do that on a large tract of land would be difficult. And, you know, that I've mentioned is a concern of mine, and that if, the other issue is, if going offsite, how do we make sure that we do something, a mechanism that, you know, guarantees that those trees will stay intact once it's offsite? So individual tree locations make that more difficult, so.
And while we, while we, while we got you still here, the acreage, the acreage that's accounted for to be reforested, please tell me that doesn't include ball fields and those types of things?
No. I mean, you know, that has to, the sites, the offsites would have to be determined between the Department of Planning and Designing and what the applicant has found as willing property owners. And ball fields would not be included because they would be needing some other requirement within the city, so, yeah.
Okay.
Ultimately, many of the trees that get planted are going to be street trees. I mean, as we close that gap in the last part of our tree canopy, a lot of what we're going to be doing is onesies and twosies. You know, that's, that's where we're going to end up. You know, you know how much canopy cover you get out of a large canopy tree. You can do that measurement towards what the acre-for-acre requirement is. When I go through and I'm looking at one neighborhood compared to another, there are some neighborhoods where the city has not planted as many trees as they have in other neighborhoods. And we need to offer that opportunity to those neighborhoods like we have. And we need to offer that opportunity to those neighborhoods like we have all the rest of them.
Alderman Pendo Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question, Ms. Broadbent, and this is kind of a side question, as far as individual residents and the tree planting, are they hamstrung in some sort of way as say they want to plant a tree? Is it in perpetuity, or what are the parameters, or if, for whatever reason, the children decide to sell the property, or whatever, how does that all operate?
So if it's in the front or the side yard setbacks, they would need a tree permit. But the tree permit does not say that we can tell you not to remove the tree. It just has your replanting, one's replanting requirements depending on the size of the tree. If the tree is in the right-of-way and is a city-owned tree, then you would definitely need to work with the city, and only the city should be the one that removes or replaces those.
Do you see any impediments to persons who say, yeah, plant a tree, but for twenty years, and after that, I may not want it anymore? I mean, how does that all operate?
Once, once you get past a certain number of years, I think it's the same as any other tree.
Okay.
One of the areas where you have a higher level of approval, even if it isn't in the setbacks, is in historic history. They are part of the look and feel and the aesthetic of the historic downtown, so they do require a higher level of approval downtown.
Alderman Lipman?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Broadbent, we've had a lot of discussion in different situations and a lot of input about the change in the tree canopy. And as we heard, and as we're reminded, I should say, part of the increase in tree canopy over the years has been through annexation. Can you help, can you help provide us with your view of the facts as to the change in tree canopy over the last, whatever time period you think appropriate?
Sure. So the only real measurement that the city relies on is the data from the University of Vermont. And that information, we had done a presentation to Environmental Matters, September 2014, and University of Vermont had come up with some better data, and at that point, they had our tree canopy at about forty-five percent. That is the last time we have truly had a real tree canopy measure. So in order to have us give a good number, we would have to have the data crunched by University of Vermont again, because they are the only ones with that higher level of expertise to do it.
And how does that compare to, say, ten years ago, 2006, 2007?
We have not had it measured again since that, since then.
Mr. Gutwold, I think there's a lot of concern about the mitigation issues. So if a developer's struggling to plant, reforest onsite, there are mitigation options. So first, if you could first address whether the city has encouraged, allowed offsite mitigation so far, and two, can you just walk us through again, all the different options for mitigation if someone does, does need help?
So by practice, you know, the city has required onsite mitigation, and they've achieved onsite mitigation for every project that has run through the Forest Conservation Act in the city to date. Remember, there are other sites that are outside in the Chesapeake Bay, critical area that has forestation requirements as well, and I know there has some challenges associated with trying to find offsite mitigation. As I, as mentioned, is there's offsite mitigation, which would, you know, they would require location on that. There are banks that they can achieve, that they can go into groups and buy purchases of properties of land, and that is an option for them, and then put conservation easements over those banks, and apply that to their, to their forest conservation requirements. And of course, there is a fee and lieu. So those are the options that they have for mitigating their impacts to cutting down the trees or not meeting their threshold requirements.
So even if a parcel was a hundred percent forested, and, but yet somehow was properly zoned for some development, how would that developer go about building on that property?
More than likely, they would probably, you know, achieve it through their credit. Part of that is would be through the credit that you put back in terms of, or fee, or offsite mitigation. Those are the sort of mainstream points of view.
Okay. So they would still be able to get some economic value out of that property?
Yeah, they, remember, you have, the threshold is only, is the minimum, and they can go above that threshold and still, you know, be able to develop the property. And in a lot of different cases, as I've shown, the planning commission, that there was a number of properties that have been developed in the city, and they, and they actually, you know, achieved their reforestation requirements through the credit process, so.
Thanks. Ms. Leonard, I'm gonna put you on the spot and do something they teach us not to do in law school, which is ask a question where you don't know the answer. So on the issue of takings, we've been discussing mitigation, the extreme case where a parcel is forested, and developer still wants to get value of the land, and we've heard that there are mitigation options, and the developer would still have options. Do you have any concern that this legislation could have a successful challenge based on the takings clause?
Under the current case law that's out there, no, not really. Takings, which is Fifth Amendment and then passed down through the states, there's very strong case law for a physical taking, where you're actually building a highway over the land, or something to that effect. And in that case, it's usually a very clear-cut takings instance, and you have to do compensation. When it comes to regulatory takings, the Supreme Court has been a little bit all over the place and inconsistent, and they have a much higher standard. So for takings for regulation, it's not that you're just decreasing value, you have to show that it's not a reasonable and consistent, they also use words that, I'm trying to, it's a much higher clause. You don't, what the courts have mostly held in, again, their cases go back and forth, is that you have to show that there's a serious economic impact on your property. And they've also on occasion held that you just, you don't have necessarily a right to your highest value use of the property. In this case, given the current case law at the federal level, and sort of where the environmental regulations are coming from, both the federal and state level, I'm not overly concerned about a takings issue.
Thank you. Took a little chance there, so, thank you.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Colleagues, I direct you to the last attachment, which is the land cover data, and I wanted to ask both Ms. Broadbent and Mr. Gutwold a couple of questions about that, because I want to return to Alderman Peon's question. I think it's a legitimate concern, and it's something that I've worried about as well, and this has to do with amendment five. But in looking at this map, I'd like to get your assessment, considering that we're already, what, ninety-three percent built environment within the city. I see a lot of pink circles here, which are opportunities for reforestation, not just tree planting, but full-fledged reforestation. And I'd like to ask your assessment of this map. Do you have some comfort that we can find places, that developers can find places, for trees to be planted within the city, which I think is the nub of your question, Fred? If we, if we have any unsureness about that, then maybe we need to be thinking about possibly releasing or softening that requirement. But when I look at this, I see a lot of nice pink circles, which means reforestation, and a lot of other areas that look like we can plant trees. But I appreciate your professional opinion on that.
If I'm looking at expanding the city's tree canopy, and the trees for which the city is going to be responsible for, and that sort of thing, I am going to start to look at the areas that we may not have thought of before. And some of them might be pink circles. Some of the places that we also need to look are the ones that are a little more challenging. And that might be where we already have sidewalks, or we always, already have paved area, and we want to convert some of that, which is where your stormwater credit's really gonna come from, and convert some of that back to an area where we add planters, underground planters, Silver Cell is sort of a brand name. But look at doing soil amendments and actually adding trees in areas that might be our light industrial areas, we're gonna look at doing some of that in the design district. You know, and looking for some areas where we wouldn't normally look to plant trees. You know, I'm with you, I don't want to put trees in ball fields. You know, because that doesn't make any sense. But I think there are opportunities out there, we just have to, have to look. I can plant a lot of trees as street trees right now, and places that the city just hasn't spent a lot of effort planting.
And Mr. Gutwold, if we, would we fairly soon know if we reached a saturation point where developers for the want of this just can't get projects done? And would we not, if we find ourselves at that point, have the ability to change the code to ease the requirement?
Sure, you have the ability to change the code. Lessons learned all the time. But, you know, they're pretty creative individuals, so I think they find ways to meet the letter of the law and move forward. I don't know, I can't speak to the data. You know, me, I like to see the data behind the data. So I want it down by the parcel level, and that's what I would want to look at, see the realistic goal, or realistic sites for those, so.
Alderman Pendo Charles?
Ms. Broadbent, those creative and innovative examples that you just gave, would they be doable under this piece of legislation?
Yes.
Question, Mr. Lipman, Alderman Lipman, would this be satisfactory? And I'm just throwing this out there. Forested areas within a half a mile radius of the city boundaries, I mean, would that satisfy or not, or, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there.
As I started with on this topic, I could see the benefits of opening it up beyond political boundaries for the environmental issues. And so I'm personally open to it. I think that then you'll, you open yourself up to two issues. One, the arbitrariness of a half a mile. What if you're five eighths of a mile away from the city? And so that's just a slippery slope. And that's why I think using terms like watershed are better, are more logical. And that's what we have today. So there's benefit. But the secondary issue you get is, when the staff is making sense to me, I try to do what they suggest. And so I started out on the other side, they've convinced me to keep it within city limits for all the reasons that you've heard. So I'm personally going to support the staff and vote for amendment five, but I think your suggestion is reasonable.
Thank you.
Alderman Budge?
Yes, I have a couple of follow-up questions. Director Broadbent, did, I hear you correctly, this is a, am I hearing right, that the University of Connecticut data in 2014 said we had a forty-five percent canopy coverage?
University of Vermont.
University of Vermont, sorry.
So it's the same, New England.
Entirely different basketball crowd.
So the University of Vermont is the ones that are the experts in crunching tree canopy data. They're, they were the ones that originally did our assessment in 2007 through the grant from DNR. So when we committed to DNR to expand in the tree canopy to fifty percent, they came up with an even more accurate tool to measure the same data. And that's where the forty-five percent came from.
So this is, that's based on the roughly 2005 data?
Yeah, 2006.
Their report was dated 2006, and-
That's right. That's right. We have, we have not-
But they're using the same data set?
Same data set, different processing. So at the time that it was originally done, they didn't have access to LiDAR and some other things that are a little more sophisticated in the data processing, and that, that is the difference.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Pan?
You know, looking over the color map that I was furnished with, I really have to question the eight hundred thirty-one acres. I mean, I'm glad that you did not circle the playing surface at the Navy-Marine Corps Stadium, but you do have the surface at Truxton Park circled. I mean, are you planning on putting trees on second base? I mean, I-
For the record, I didn't do that math.
I mean, I just think we're gonna be right back in here with further legislation.
This was not produced by staff.
I'm sorry?
This was not produced by staff.
Look, this hasn't by any means turned me against the overall legislation, but I, it just looks to me like, you know, very quickly, we're gonna be in here seeking new legislation because they're gonna be, I mean, you got the home out on Horseshoe Point and Ward Door, and my ward circled, I mean, you gonna plant trees there so you can block the, you know, the water view? Yeah, I mean, I guess it is a little bit open, but come on. I mean, these, some of these things are questionable. I see you also did not circle the cemeteries, I'm very glad for that too, as is my father and mother who were buried in one of them, but.
We haven't circled them yet.
Yeah.
All right, I've said my piece, thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Kirby?
Excuse me. What does it do for individual homeowners if they want to take a tree down? They have to plant another tree?
It depends on the size, and depends on where it is. Right now, if it's a tree in your backyard, it's not, you know, on the side of your yard that's next to a street, you can go ahead, you can go ahead and take it down, unless you're in the historic district.
So you tell, it won't be no more trade-offs, like one tree for three shrubs?
This doesn't affect that at all.
This is the Forest Conservation Act, so it's not applicable till you hit forty thousand square feet.
Right. This does not, this does not change that at all.
Okay, okay, good.
Anyone else? Alderman Finlayson?
Yeah, my question is about the map also, and I know it's not our map, and so for that reason, we probably shouldn't be dwelling on it. But do you, can you tell how much of this is private property? How much of it is public? You know, forty percent of the city is, you know, churches, the Naval Academy, the State House, et cetera.
Right. Which, what I would suggest, and what I, my comment to Alderman Arnett was, I'd like to see the data behind the data, is to see what's, I would want to do this by property, and I would want to evaluate each and every tax account number to see what's on that property. As I've mentioned before, we're working with our GIS department, and we're doing land use inventory ourselves through the University of Maryland. So we're starting to look at each and every one of these properties, what's on this property, what is the existing land use? So I would like to, I know, you know, there's the base data at the University of Vermont, it would be great to use that, but I think there are capabilities within the city to evaluate this at a parcel-by-parcel level. And I think that's what Maria is talking about, as she moves forward through her program, she'll be evaluating each and every parcel of their capabilities of even sustaining the life of a tree, much less is there open space? So there's going to be that level of analysis done, but the first set of analysis is get the data behind the data. What properties are we talking about, and what's the reality of it being used for forest conservation?
Currently, if I want to go out and plant a tree, say, in someone's front yard, we literally have to go to Public Works, find maps, and go out with a measuring wheel to measure, to see whether the, you know, the right-of-way belongs to the city. So the tool that we're hoping to get the grant for will actually put that information in the same GIS system. It'll be available for the public to use and on our website, so the development community and folks that want to use it would have access to it as well, to help them find locations, and whether there's right-of-way or utilities there, and all that kind of information. You have to look at them at a, at an individual basis, like Mr. Gutwold said. This is a real small map to show you the whole area, and saying that eight hundred acres there are useful, there might be eight hundred acres, but it might not be where the pink circles are.
So in the event that we plant trees on somebody's property, or on one of our own properties, like the Annapolis Walk field behind the community center, I know that we have planned- we have planted two trees there that I was asked to water them regularly, which I did not do, I'm just being honest with you. But somebody, all that to say, I know, shame on me, you know, but, mm, somebody's gonna have to maintain them, and especially as young trees, they're gonna have to be nurtured, and so whose job, who's, who does that? Is the developer? Is it a city staff person?
So it depends on how all this is done through the Forest Conservation Act, which is, there are, you know, survivability, and there are agreements and bonds that are required by the developers, let's just say they're using their own property for conservation, and they do a reforestation on their own property, on another part of their property, there's a bond that we hold, make sure that there is a certain amount of survivability of those, of those trees over a term. It depends on what is agreed upon in terms of how long that is. I would suspect that if it's off-site mitigation, in my previous experience, I would require the same amount, and I would require an easement on that property if it's off-site, to make sure that there is survivability and that the, that the trees are maintained in perpetuity as trees. Because, trust me, property owners don't necessarily know that that was, oh, that was part of that subdivision's, you know, requirement to maintain those trees, so. Those are some of the mechanisms I talked to that need to be in place when we do these types of off-site.
Alderwoman Pindel, Charles?
Picking up on what Mr. Gutwold just said, so you're asking a homeowner or a developer to put an easement on the property for the, that was my original question, in perpetuity?
For the purposes of the Forest Conservation Act. I don't know if Ms. Broadbent was necessarily talking, speaking for forest conservation, she was just speaking in general terms.
You mean a developer versus a single, a homeowner? I mean...
Yeah, there would be, there are, you know, yeah, you could potentially have easements on individual property owners, yes, if it's part of the Forest Conservation easement required for that development.
Say for instance, it's not a development, it's parole street.
So if, if we planted trees in the, in the front yard of parole street, and the funding came from a Forest Conservation Act project, in my vision, if these are within the right-of-way, and these are now city trees, they're, they're now covered by an ordinance that protects the trees planted in the right-of-way.
In the right-of-way, but not on the private, property of the homeowner?
The right-of-way is on your private property. So it could...
Oh, I, okay, I see what you're saying, I got you, okay.
So where you have street trees planted in neighborhoods, they're, they're normally on private property, but they're within the land that's covered by a right-of-way...
I understand what you're saying.
And their protection is already covered by an ordinance, and I don't think that they need to be in an easement.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, 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 okay, I see what you're saying.
They become a street tree, city-maintained tree, once the bond...
Have you had any discussions with the county, how their program operates, or...
The county has so much money that they've collected from fee and lieu that they give away as grants. The county does not have the requirement to require the developers to do all of their Forest Conservation Act planning on-site. I know a lot of funding gets given out through various sources because they just don't have the setup to plant the trees with their fee and...
Thank you.
Just to clarify, my point is, I wasn't speaking about the street trees, I'm talking about if it's on the back forty of somebody else's property. There are other properties that have vacant land, county or whoever, even in the city, that, you know, those acreage would not be protected under Title fourteen or Title seventeen, they would, that's why, that's the area that I would envision having an easement on.
Okay, okay, I, now, now I understand, okay, thank you.
The amendment's been motioned and seconded, and I would, maybe ask if you would amend it to vote on it as a block?
I think because there are questions about Amendment Five, I would offer to, offer Amendments One, Two, Three, and Four as a block, and then offer Amendment Five separately, if that's acceptable?
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor of voting for Amendments One through Four, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt Amendment Five? So moved. Second, and back to discussion.
I didn't hear you.
I said back to discussion if anybody had any comments.
Believe I have discussion doubt, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O-3816 as amended on second reader?
So moved.
So moved, second. Any discussion? Alderman Budge?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a few concerns about the underlying ordinance. Some, I emailed to my constituents a number of concerns last night, some of which have been addressed in conversation today and in testimony. We've learned that the state legislature has effectively passed legislation, even though it isn't signed into law yet, that will permit local jurisdictions to adopt legislation such as this. And we've heard probably more than we want to, about the takings issue, thank you, that take those questions off the table. But I remain concerned about a couple of things. One is the suggestion that we have space to put these trees if we do the, to do replantings. We've been given numbers by proponents of the bill that there are three hundred ninety-five acres that are suitable for it, that there are eight hundred and thirty-one acres that are suitable for it, that there are two hundred and seventy-four acres that are suitable for it. None of the methodology behind these numbers has been explained to the council. No objective observer can go take a look and say, yes, I might reach that same conclusion. We're just being given numbers and told to take them on faith. That's not something I'm willing to do, especially in the wide disparity of the numbers that were being given. I'm concluding that we don't know what we're talking about. Secondly, the, there is a question here of balance. One of the speakers earlier in the evening in public comments said that this is balanced legislation. I have not heard any discussion of balance in the course of this legislation. When I earned my degree in environmental science, the, we were taught that environmental considerations needed to consider the economic, the public policy, and the social impacts of the environmental legislation, as well as purely the ecosystem and natural resource The discussion that I, we've heard tonight, that we've heard over the course of this legislation, has only been about the impacts on the natural environment. And yes, there are, there are benefits to having increased tree coverage that this legislation will bring about. And it will bring about decreased costs in stormwater fees, but there hasn't been any attempt to address, examine, or look at the costs that will be borne in terms of the economic impacts on the city's economy, or on the ability to provide services to our residents. I don't think that this bill is balanced at all. And for that reason, while I was a strong supporter and sponsor of the two prior bills on forest conservation, I think this bill is a step too far. And that we're, this bill approaches the point of throwing out the baby with the bathwater, and I don't think I can support it.
Alderwoman Pindel, Charles?
Yeah, just point of clarification, Alderman Budge, are you talking specifically about Amendment Number Five?
No.
Okay, I'm, no.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. And I'll begin by saying that I, too, worked on the last two pieces of legislation and supported them both, and my tenure, like the Alderman, actually Alderman Pfeiffer and I began during the previous administration. But I take it from a different perspective this evening. As elected officials, we don't have the opportunity nor the luxury of being myopic. We must look at all the issues and the impact that our decisions have on other issues. Is the environment important to us? Absolutely it is. Is adequate housing important to us? Absolutely it is. Are job creation and job opportunities important to us? Absolutely they are. Is being able to strike a balance between all of the concerns important to us? Absolutely, that's our job. I believe that we must be aware of the unintended consequences. I understand that balance is necessary so that the residents of our city will not only have a healthy environment in which to live, but also adequate housing, and transportation, and jobs, that businesses thrive. And while we don't want to admit it, we must increase our tax base. It is noted that economic development has not weighed in. We want to pretend that we are about job creation and business development, but we put obstacles in the way. It seems to be a little concern about taxes that residents must pay, and the constant increases that allow us to maintain the services at the level that are wanted and needed by our residents. We don't have the luxury of unlimited funds. We increase our tax base, or we must increase our tax base, so that we can continue to provide the services. We would be irresponsible to not be considering every opportunity to bring new businesses to our city. It is a balancing act. My last concern has to do with residents' rights. We have a responsibility to protect the rights of our citizens. Growing up in Annapolis, I've witnessed too many times, property owners denied their rightful use of their own land. We should not encourage any action that would deny an individual's rights. I will abstain from this vote, not because I don't believe the environment is important. I mentioned I just spent three days in King George, Virginia. I will abstain because we don't know the true impact of this legislation, and how it will infect, affect us, on our economic development, on our job creation, on adequate and affordable housing, on transportation, on our tax base, on the funding for the services that our residents want and need, or the many other issues that impact the quality of life of all of our Annapolis residents. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Alderman Lippman? Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief. Regarding the question, Mr. Bud, Alderman Budge, that there's, you haven't heard a discussion of balance, how I view this, legislation's having balance in, in one aspect, is that the further extreme of this legislation would seek to not just stop making the problem worse of having no net loss, but we would have it legislation that would require an increase of tree canopy. And this legislation certainly and clearly stops short of that. And that's how I view this as balance. It doesn't require that for every acre, it's not two-to-one ratio. And as I provided you some information earlier today, in, or one of our neighboring counties, that actually is a requirement for over twenty-five thousand square feet when a forest is removed. So that's how I view this as balance, is it not making things impossible for the developer. Could be more expensive in certain scenarios, possibly, but it's not such an extreme point that it makes it go too far. And that's where I see this as being balanced. As far as the job creation and housing issues, Alderwoman Finlayson, there's been no evidence that this legislation would have a negative impact on either. So I understand your concerns that it would, but I don't see that it's founded on anything other than just a fear, as opposed to any evidence that can be offered to that point. Certainly, we can and we would consider legislation that focuses on those two issues, job creation and housing, or any other issue. This, this is, as we discussed in economic matters, I think it's fairly neutral to those issues.
Alderman Budge?
Alderman Lippman, you describe other communities that have, that there are other communities in Maryland who have imposed restrictions or thresh, ratios that are as or more stringent than this bill. What has been the experience of those communities in terms of the impact on their, impacts on their local economy?
I'm not knowledgeable to be able to answer that question.
I was about to say, if there's no other discussion, but Alderman Arnett?
Well, just, just a quick point. I, I mean, I understand Alderman Budge's and Alderwoman Finlayson's point, but if we waited until we had all unintended consequences sorted out, I don't think we would ever pass any legislation. I mean, I think it's kind of an unfair question to put it in those terms. Just as we don't know whether this is going to have a negative impact on development, we don't know that it is. I think there are ample ways for the developers to meet this requirement. I think we've seen that there are ample places that that can be met, and I just feel that if we start applying standards like that, we'd never get anything done. You know, I, I just, I, I am having a hard time even understanding where that is coming from. Not that, I'm not trying to minimize or, in any way, the feelings of the speakers, it's just, I wouldn't know how to address them. I mean, we'd have to wait and do study after study, and explore community after community. So, you know, I, I understand the points, but I don't think it's sufficient for me to say no to this legislation.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
My comments are based solely on what I have observed, and I wouldn't call my comments based on fear, but based on our inaction as a council. When I look at, I hearken back to when we tried to redevelop Newtown Twenty, and we wanted to increase the housing there, and there was a tremendous backlash because we were increasing the number of homes for those who were in greatest need. We had an opportunity, and we did not take it. So there is no indication that we want to do anything that is going to serve the needs that I'm expressing. I know that our businesses, first of all, I know, and we all know, that we must do something about our tax base. I mean, you above all have said a hundred times, if you've said it once, we can't just continue raising taxes, but we do nothing to address that. So any opportunity that we stifle to bring new businesses to the city, then we're doing that. We are adding a greater tax burden on the people who live here, and we're not doing anything to help that. And businesses, economic development is not in the room to have this discussion. And that's probably because... And that's probably because our person spoke in opposition to the last legislation. You know? So we don't know, and I'm not saying that we just hold off until we study everything because you can't. But it is our actions that will speak volumes. So, you know, this is one voice, but I felt the need to express where I'm coming from.
Is there any other discussion? Alderman Pam?
Mr. Mayor, I still have not had my original question, I think, adequately addressed. And that is, what do we do when we run out of space here in the city of Annapolis? I feel confident that we'll be back in here wrestling with the problem in a very short period of time. Again, I, I'm a little disappointed that amendment number five went through, but that's water over the dam, so to speak. I understand that. It has not affected my support of the overall legislation. I'm one of the ones who felt that no net loss was, should have been in the original Forest Conservation Act. The, I was wisely advised by several of my colleagues that that would not be acceptable to the Department of Natural Resources. But I, I really think that we ought to allow for, you know, some of this to be developed, trees reforested in the, in the same watershed over the county line. But having said that, I do intend to support the legislation.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We were talking about as amended, but there's a third reader after this. So we're voting to adopt it as amended, yes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All, all those against? All abstained? Fully noted. Is there a motion to adopt O 1016 on third reader? So move. Second. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pam Ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Abstained.
Alderman Litman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Abstained.
Alderman Pam?
A reluctant aye.
The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present our next item?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance O 1017, lease of city property, Spring 2021 to 2026 boat shows for the purpose of authorizing a lease of certain municipal property located at the city docks, surrounding areas, and boat moorings in Annapolis, Maryland as more fully described in the lease agreement with Cruisers University Incorporated, trading as Annapolis Spring Sailboat Show for certain dates in 2021 through 2026 to conduct boat shows.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Why did we make Paul wait through all of this other stuff? That's stupid.
He chased me in the door at 6:45.
There is one amendment. It is the Economic Matters proposed amendment, and I'll let the sponsor speak to it this time.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. The, there are actually two amendments, but they are technical in nature. I believe the City Law Office asked us to make these. Had to do with the dates. On page 11, line 8, we recommended that the word April be stricken and insert the word November. Line 16, in the same paragraph, on the same page, excuse me, do the same thing with regard to April and insert November. Amendment 2 is page 12, line 45, strike August and insert the word April.
I'll just add, it was just an error. We started drafting the fall lease first, we moved to the spring lease. We thought we'd gotten everything sort of shifted to accommodate both and these three words made it through. All it is is sort of an adjustment to accommodate the spring calendar.
Bottom line, Mr. Mayor, is that we strongly recommend the council as a whole to support this.
One second for a motion?
Is there a motion to vote on it with a block? The two amendments together?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Is there a motion to adopt O 1017 as amended on second reader?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O 1017 on third reader? Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Pam Ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Litman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
Aye.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Pam?
A not so reluctant aye.
The ayes have it. Madam City Attorney, would you please present our last item on the agenda? Will you adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is ordinance O 1217, compensation of the mayor, aldermen, alderwomen, and city manager for the purpose of specifying compensation and allowances to be paid to the mayor and aldermen, alderwomen, for the term of office commencing on the first Monday in December 2017 for specifying compensation allowances to be paid to the city manager.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a motion to amend O 1217?
Yes. Move.
Second?
Second.
All right, there is Finance Committee Amendment.
Mr. Mayor, the, on your desk is a printed amendment number one from the Finance Committee. When we considered this this afternoon, there was some debate with the Office of Law and the City Manager about a provision in there about the, the dates. And basically for all of, for the mayor's salary and for the, the aldermanic salaries, it's clear that it starts with the first, sort of after the swearing in of the next term. And, and the provision was not exactly clear about the city manager. So this basically is an amendment to strike this July 1 date, which is the beginning of the fiscal year, and insert at the beginning of the next council term. So it links up his potential salary with that of the council and the mayor.
Is there a motion to adopt the amendment?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. Tom's got a long drive to the eastern shore. Is there a motion to adopt O 1217 as amended on second reader? No, apologize. Alderman Budge?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I have a philosophical problem with the suggestion that we raise the council's so-called salary. This is not really a salary, it is a stipend. And to pretend otherwise and to pretend that we should be increasing it for inflation or expenses or any other excuse is simply trying to pretend that it's something that it's not. None of us are here to get rich, we're here to serve our city. And for that reason, I move that in page three, paragraph, beginning on line nine, where we change the salary from $13,500 to $15,000, that we strike that change and revert it to the original language.
Any discussion?
Repeat that again.
Without the technical line numbers and everything, I'm suggesting that we keep the council salary at $13,500 as it is now.
And then training, we go up $1,500 as a
I'm not suggesting a change to that.
Alderman Pam?
Mr. Mayor, I agree completely with Alderman Budge. I don't think I've ever voted for a pay increase the time I've been on the council, and this time is no exception. I regard my service on the council to be public service, community service, if you will. For years, I ran the fireworks for the city, which entailed hundreds of hours of work. I was chairman of the Ethics Commission and did a couple of other assignments as requested by various mayors over the years and never received a dime, nor did I complain for one moment. I think it's part of giving back to the community. The $13,500 is, well, the taxpayers are giving a lot of work out of a lot of people for that amount of money, but that's part of community service. And I regard it as a stipend, a token payment. And I think, to me, that's sufficient. Thank you.
You, Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, I will oppose the amendment. And I guess I could start with, by saying, you get what you pay for. However, the stipend for the council has not been changed since, I guess, I've been sitting on the council.
Yeah, we were
It changed four years ago, but it was, you know,
Okay, $600.
Twelve something to thirteen something.
It has not encouraged any participation as far as, I mean, we do have people seeking the positions, don't, don't get me wrong. But it's not an attraction. We're, we're looking at who's sitting here today. Most of us are retired and we can assume, I said most, I know there's two of you that are not retired, three of you, I'm sorry. Well, and we don't know who's going to be here next. And, but there are expenses associated with the job. And so while Alderman Payone doesn't mind and can afford, we don't know who's going to come next. And we shouldn't discourage participation because people can't afford to volunteer their time. So I would like for you to consider, the committee did their work as they're charged to do. They came to this conclusion, I'm not sure how, but they did come to this conclusion. The previous committee came to a different conclusion and we didn't see fit to support it. But it was a considerably bigger jump than this meager increase here. So I would ask you to think about others that will, may be coming in to take these seats. And the mayor's not volunteering his time. And so I would hope that you all would have a consideration for the future council.
Point of clarification, one, my salary's not going up and I wouldn't say you're volunteering, volunteering your time either, everyone's getting paid.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, what's your salary?
$98,000.
Oh, okay.
And you're paid $13,500. So don't sit here and say that I'm not volunteering, that you're not
Mr. Mayor, you have a full-time job.
I do, and I work 60 hours a week every week and I love every second of it. Dream come true.
We'll look for
Alderman Pam?
Those calendars.
Mr. Mayor, I'm a little surprised and I have to say, taken aback by the comments of my colleague from Ward 4. What she said was an insult to the volunteers that put in hundreds of hours a year in behalf of the city. The, you can go right down the line. The, you know, various boards and commissions that we have, they don't get paid a dime. And I, I really take great issue with, you get what you pay for, really? I don't think so. That is not correct. There are people who are very good in their field, who are outstanding and wish to contribute things to the city. And they neither get paid nor do they expect to get paid. And in terms of, I can afford it, really? She knows about my finances and my financial situation? I don't think so. That's a particular personal insult on my part. I was a career prosecutor, I could have made three or four times as much money as I did on the private side. I'm married to a school teacher, yeah. Boy, they really make a ton of money too. Unfortunately, I didn't inherit a lot of money, unlike some people, perhaps who did, I don't know. But I take a great personal umbrage at the comments of my colleague from Ward 4, particularly those directed at me, my financial situation, and the volunteers that worked very hard for, for nothing for this city. Thank you.
I echo Alderman Pam's comments, a lot of people do work hard for free. Alderman Litman?
I was debating whether to speak up, but I feel like it's important. Well,
Be careful.
That'd be for the public's point of view, you're talking about $1,500. Please, please, let me, let me, let me, it's my time now. So I think, first of all, we need to all take a step back from this conversation. None of, none of this discussion should be about any of us as individuals. None of us have been reelected to a new term and this legislation applies to the new term. Many of you are seeking reelection and that's wonderful, I commend you. You've each worked tirelessly, you've each well-earned the salaries that you've been getting. So this should not be about whether anyone has worked for their salary, whether they deserve more salary or not. It's not about any of us, the nine of us, talking about this or getting a chance to vote on this now. So I think that's really important to take a deep breath and step back from that. When I think of this whole system, and again, not talking about the individuals, when we talk about the sustainability of our government and not raising taxes, one of our biggest challenges is that we have an enormous payroll. And that is partly because we have a lot of individuals, but it's also largely because we have really high salaries for a lot of positions. When I was putting my thoughts together for this agenda, doing a little research, and it came up the Capitol article, it talks about the employee salaries. And yes, I should have all of those salaries, you know, memorized, but just reminded about how much we pay for how many positions, it's astronomical. When I think about, we certainly are a full-service city, I get that. And that's, and certainly I get, of course, that we are a destination for, so our daytime populations exceed our nighttime populations, I get it. But I systematically have a problem with the, the amount of high, highly-paid staff. We have this odd former government, certainly, where we have a city manager that is wonderful. And again, not talking about the individuals here, makes, in my mind, a lot of money. We have a man, a mayor who, in some ways has a lot of authority, in some ways does not have a lot of, a lot of authority, compared to the county executive, for instance. The mayor here, and I'm pointing to the seat, not to the individual. The mayor here is one of nine votes as opposed to having veto rights. So it's, it's a odd system, but to me, it just, we are essentially paying two top executive salaries for, not the same job, but in, in the leadership role. And so to me, I fundamentally have a problem with our structure and our salaries for sustainability of this city government. So yes, certainly, working the alderman job, all the person's job, is, is worth more than $13,000, can, $13,500. Can we afford to give a collective $12,000 increase? That's a pretty high percent, first of all. I don't know that we can. How have we treated the rest of our employees? How, how are we going to handle employees in the next budget? Every budget I've been a part of, and that's been four so far, I've got my fifth coming up, which is well short of some of my colleagues here. We've been very stingy on, on new raises. We've cut positions and yet we're considering giving the next council pay increases. And so I, I have a problem with it. I've sought to, whenever I've been in favor of or proposed for a new position or any funding, I've always sought to do offsets. And so I suggest, I would, I'm supporting Alderman Budge's motion, but I would also support the reciprocal, which is to keep the increase but deduct it from either the mayor's position or the city manager's position.
How kind of you.
And again, Ms. Mayor, this is not about you personally.
Oh, I know. But if you looked at the, if you looked at the county executive and his chief operating officer and everything else, they're making into the 160s, 170s. And I know it's not about me. Is there any other discussion? Alderman Pfeiffer?
Let me just, I, I feel like it's sort of deja vu all over again. I think we had almost everybody except, except Alderman Hoyle, who we saw tonight, was here four years ago. We had this same sort of conversation probably, the same sort of a fight. And my sense then is the same as now, is you impale these people to sit on a commission to come up, to dream up whatever they think it should be, that they figure out how to bring something forward. And rather than trying to amend it or screw around with it all, I think you just vote for it and be done with it. But I'm not, I'm not running again, so, you know, I won't benefit from it either way or, or see a reduction. But I, I do think the, the getting into sort of, in a city with a $100 million budget that we're about to embark on in a couple of weeks, screwing around about $12,000, I'm not sure is, is the best use of our time and effort. But, so I, I'm, my sense would be to resist the amendment and vote for the package as is and be done with it.
Alderman Arnett?
I was just going to paraphrase Fiddler on the Roof, just because other people are highly-paid, I should suffer? That's all.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes. First of all, I want to make it very clear that my remarks were not intended to insult our volunteers. I am the advocate for employees and almost everybody that supports us. So I'm sure, well, at least I hope no one took my remarks in an insulting fashion.
Probably enough discussion. Classic. All right, all those in favor, actually, of the amendment, which is to take it to the original, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Maybe, I hate your roll call votes, but I couldn't tell.
I think so.
The amendment.
Roll call.
I mean, I get, I couldn't tell by themselves.
Mayor Pam Ladies?
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
This is for Alderman Budge's amendment.
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
No.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
No.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
No.
Alderman Arnett?
No.
Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Pam?
Aye. The ayes have it, five to four.
Five to four.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt O-1217 as amended on second reader?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Is there a motion to adopt O-1217 on third reader?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Pam Ladies?
Aye.
I'm going to make sure I got this right.
Do a vote on it on third reader, it's the roll call, the final vote.
As amended.
As amended.
It's amended on second.
As amended. Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
No.
Alderman Littman?
No.
Alderman Kirby?
No.
Does that mean we're voting the...
Okay, Alderman Pfeiffer?
No.
Alderman Arnett?
Point of information, I'm not sure what...
I think me too, right? Are we not voting on the entire package?
We're voting down the entire package?
Basically.
Well, that means we stay where we are now, right?
We're a scratch.
Yeah. I abstain.
Okay, Alderman Budge?
Aye.
Alderman Pam?
Aye.
The ayes have it. All right, so then everything just stays the same?
Yep.
Which is basically what would have happened if we said aye. Budge's amendment.
Yes, you just...
That would have meant all of our salaries would have been the same because of Budge's amendment.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. Alderman Budge wanted to put it back to the original $13,500. If it's only defeated it, it would have been the same, passing it. Because it goes to $13,500.
Yeah, it can be, so basically the commission's report stays the way that it is.
Got it. All right, there's nothing else on the agenda, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, meeting adjourned.